I want to welcome you to this September 12th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those of you who are willing and able, I will invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by, I apologize, the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we thank you and praise you for your abundant love, mercy, and grace. As we pause to remember our heroes of September 11th, we give thanks for the devotion and commitment of all of our public servants and citizens who continue to work together to assist each other every day. We acknowledge that our work as public servants is a privilege and a tremendous responsibility. We seek your divine wisdom and strength in all that we do. We ask that you unite us in our common goals and purpose so that the harvest of our work has a positive impact on our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 5.04 has been added to your agenda, and Items 11.06 and 12.01 have been updated in your material.
Thank you. Commissioners, if you wouldn't mind joining me down at the dais, we'll make this first presentation together, and I believe, is it you Commissioner Miller that is presenting, Chris? Or is that Ziffer? That's you. If we could all just join at the dais, please. Hold him. Not a few weeks ago, this community lost a pretty amazing public servant, a woman who had really given her lifetime to improving the lives of so many here in our community, by the name of Chris Nab. I want to invite now my colleague Commissioner Nancy Miller to present this proclamation as the rest of us stand in solidarity with the words that are here. Commissioner Miller.
Just on a personal note, this is one of the most wonderful women I have ever known. Whereas, Chris Nab spent her life and career as a social change advocate, making Tallahassee and Leon County a better community for her heart, grit, energy, and influence. And whereas Chris spent nearly forty years working to make Legal Services of North Florida the best organization with the best team possible, with the goal of helping people have a voice through civil legal assistance. Whereas, Chris fearlessly led a team of staff and pro bono lawyers in five offices covering sixteen counties, and helped people recover social security benefits, helped domestic violence victims, represented children in foster care, provided services to homeless veterans, and financial relief for public housing residents, and more. And whereas, Chris helped Legal Services of North Florida grow from one small office into one of the most respected legal service agencies in the country, providing legal representation and counsel on the average to seven thousand families annually. Whereas, for her contributions and tireless work, Chris received numerous awards, including the inaugural Attorney General's Award for Excellence in Public Service, the inaugural Exemplary Public Service Award given by the Florida State College of Law, the Tallahassee Bar Association's Martha Barnett Women Lawyers of Achievement Award, and the Jack McLean Champion for Legal Services Award. Whereas, Chris was a member of the Florida Supreme Court Steering Committee on Families and Children in Court. Whereas, Chris gave freely of her personal time to issues impacting women and girls by serving as a Commissioner on the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and as an advisory board member of the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. Whereas, Chris was honored by Tallahassee Community College with the Celebrating Women of Courage and Vision Award, and the Edwina Stevens Community Leader Award, and the Oasis Center for Women and Girls Trailblazer Award. And whereas, Chris was a founding member of the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and advocated for the formation of and the successful establishment of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. And whereas, in particular, her leadership role on the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls through her services as Vice Chair during 2012 through 2014 Commission year, and whereas, her service on the following committees during her three-year tenure in service on the Commission, Violence Against Women and Girls Committee, and Women and the Workplace Committee. Whereas, her significant contributions to understanding the local and global issues affecting and impacting women and girls throughout the 2012 and 2013 reports on the status of women and girls in Leon County. And whereas, Chris was willing to stand up when others were not, to speak out for people who could not, and to serve as a mentor to many people who will continue and carry on her legacy of public service and good works. Whereas, Chris chose a life of service to her community, and in particular, those residents who were underrepresented within it, through nonprofits and community service, and did so with extraordinary success, not only as an executive, but as an advocate. Now therefore, I, Nancy Miller, on behalf of the Mayor and City Commission, express our appreciation for the outstanding contributions made by Chris Nab during her nearly forty years of public service in support of the Tallahassee Leon County community, and in particular, the women and girls of our community. And I am honored to be able to read this to you. Thank you. Is there any, who is here to accept this? Erin Kenny?
truly an amazing woman and deserves to be recognized for all her hard work advocating for disadvantaged people and fighting injustice. She was proud of the work she did on the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and I know she would be grateful they wanted to stand with the city in acknowledging her work on behalf of women and girls. My mom was deeply admired and loved. I would be grateful if the people who are here for her today would please stand. Thank you to all of you and to the city. She was lucky to have such amazing family and friends. I look forward to continuing her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for taking time and coming to join us for that special occasion. I know Chris Nab impacted each and every one of us individually. She was one of the first advocates I met when I got elected in 2003. Always passionate, always committed, always coming from a place of love, but also very, very determined around her mission and around her calling, right? You didn't want to cross her the wrong way. Not for her sake, but for the sake of the people for whom she was standing on the gap on behalf of. And we thank her for that, and we'll miss her. Commissioners, now we'll have a presentation by Commissioner Gil Ziffer, myself, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do this, since I have limited opportunities to break the rules here, only a few meetings left, I'm going to break the rules, because I want to recognize somebody else first. And it's not political, just everybody calm down. Allison Ferris, I'm going to do it Allison, I'm sorry, but there are so many people here, recently won the Stanley Tate Award from the Florida Public Relations Association because she exemplifies and demonstrates the very best in her industry, and she was recognized for it by her peers. So thank you Allison for all you do. Now, I'll do what I'm supposed to do. If I could bring up the quotes from the Hang Tough Foundation, Janelle Irwin is here, yes? Come on up. And if any of your Board of Directors are here, have them come up too? Come on. Come on, get close. And I'll read it from the big one here. Anymore? Come on. You can walk, it's alright. Don't wait. Okay. Whereas, childhood cancer crosses all racial, ethnic, and social boundaries, and whereas, every day forty-six children are diagnosed with cancer, and every day seven children will die from cancer. Whereas, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in US children, infancy to age fifteen. And whereas, leukemia makes up thirty percent of cancer in children and is the most common. Brain and central nervous system cancers make up twenty-six percent and is the second most common. Neuroblastoma makes up six percent, and Wilms tumor lymphoma, you're going to have to help me with these, see. And the next one? Thank you very much. And bone cancers make up the remaining types of cancer in children. They are big words. Whereas, chemotherapy and radiation therapy can have long-term side effects, so children need to be monitored for a lifetime. And whereas, Hang Tough Foundation was established to take an encompassing approach to take care of the entire family who has a child diagnosed with a pediatric illness such as cancer. And whereas, the City of Tallahassee encourages its citizens to go gold for pediatric cancer awareness during the month of September. Now therefore, I, Gil Ziffer, for our mayor and our city, by the authority vested in me and the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, along with the City Commission hereby recognizes and designates the month of September 2018 as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, and thank you for all you do.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, especially Commissioner Ziffer, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening to recognize September as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. Each year roughly a hundred and seventy thousand children are diagnosed with cancer. The good news is that more than seventy-five percent of US child cancer patients become long-term survivors, but even those survivors are faced with lasting effects from treatment as well as secondary cancers. Currently, our national funding only designates four percent to pediatric cancer research, and there's so much more work yet to be done. These facts hit home to our community and especially for me. The Hang Tough Foundation was founded by two moms who were brought together by our own personal journeys with childhood cancer. My son Grayson and our co-founder Michelle Hart's daughter Haley are the inspiration for the work that we are doing here in Tallahassee. The Hang Tough Foundation currently serves over four hundred and seventy-five heroes, which is the child with a diagnosis of an illness or a special need, and all their family members, which totals over fifteen hundred people in Tallahassee and the surrounding areas. Last week, Hang Tough held its fourth annual Cascades Goes Gold event to kick off our month-long awareness campaign for pediatric cancer. We had approximately three hundred and fifty people attend while recognizing over forty families from our community alone that are affected by childhood cancer. In addition to that, ten of those heroes, we remembered them as we have lost them, three alone in the past year. As you visit various businesses around town, you may see golden trikes being displayed as part of this year's campaign for awareness. Riding a bike is a childhood rite of passage, but each day forty-three children in the US will be diagnosed with cancer and miss out on years of riding a bike and playing and so much more. More than sixty-five businesses have partnered with us this year to shine a light on pediatric cancer and on the heroes of this community that have passed away from cancer, as well as those that are combating and surviving childhood cancer by hosting a golden tricycle. Thank you again for this amazing opportunity to be with you today and for joining our cause to raise awareness for Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month.
I have the pleasure of inviting forward the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U All-Star Team. Will y'all join us up here in the front row? Awesome, awesome, awesome. Well, some of you all know that we are hosting some national champs today, and it's a real honor to do so. It's my real pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of the City Commission to the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U All-Star Team. And the proclamation reads, whereas, the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U All-Star Team won the 2018 Babe Ruth World Series title in Longview, Washington, in a thrilling comeback, seven to four victory over the previously undefeated Mifflin County, Pennsylvania team. That deserves a round of applause. Awesome. And whereas, in this sixty-second year of the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth Baseball, the 15U team winning the 2018 World Series marked the sixth time, TLBR team has won the ultimate title in the Babe Ruth Baseball. And whereas, in the last four seasons alone, five Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth teams have appeared in a World Series, lending further credibility to Tallahassee being nationally recognized as one of the best youth baseball communities in America. And we'll take that. And whereas, reflecting the outstanding quality of youth baseball in Tallahassee, the twelve-man roster of the 2018 TLBR 15U team was comprised of players from five different local high schools, truly encompassing this county, including Childs, Florida State University School, Leon, Lincoln, and Rickards High Schools. And whereas, the roster featured players Will Brown, Hayden Kelly, just wave if, as I call your name, Will Brown, Hayden Kelly, Arjean Lynn, Logan Melvin, Ethan Miller, Landon Shackelford, Cooper Smith, Lawrence Steed, Jack Sturgis, Roan Tarbitt, Nick Taylor, and A.J. Thorpe. And whereas, the Tallahassee Leon player Will Brown, where are you Will? Wave for us. Will was named the 2018 World Series Tournament's Most Outstanding Player. Congratulations. Awesome. And whereas, manager Brian Kelly and his assistant coaches Ken Smith and James Keister, can you all wave, all three of you? Y'all deserve credit too, especially because you spent virtually the entire summer with this team, lending your expertise and guidance, and ultimately led to capturing the World Series championship, including having to win all remaining games at both the regional and World Series tournaments after losing their first, their second game in both events. And whereas, the coaches, players, and certainly their parents, in fact, I'm going to invite forward, all of the parents of these amazing players, will y'all stand where you are and then come forward and join, join your kids? Will all the parents please stand up? Oh, well, nice. Now that I see that some of you all are taking pictures and recording, you can stay where you are and keep recording until we wrap this part. And whereas, Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth is sanctioned as an advanced play component of the City of Tallahassee Parks, Recations, and Neighborhood Affairs Department's comprehensive baseball program. And whereas, the City of Tallahassee congratulates the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U All-Star Team, players, and coaches for their incredible success at the 2018 Babe Ruth World Series. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the power invested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U All-Star Team for their superb accomplishment, for being the 2018 Babe Ruth World Series champions, and for being outstanding, and I mean outstanding, ambassadors of the Tallahassee Leon County community. Will you all join me in a salute to these amazing women?
Well, it's a spokesperson, always a spokesperson. Nice to be back in City Hall. My name is Bill Behenna. I'm with the Board of Directors for Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth Baseball. And on behalf of the league, we thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. We also thank Ashley Edwards and Cindy Mead and their hard-working crew at the city's Parks and Rec Department for their long support of our league. While there's an inherent risk of discussing baseball when it's football and election season, what these young men and their coaches accomplish truly speaks to the fabric of our community. As the mayor mentioned in the proclamation, the twelve players are representative of the wonderful diversity our community is known for. They come from different backgrounds, different areas of the city, and attend different schools. Collectively, however, they blended together as a team, battled adversity by having to come through the loser's bracket in both the Southeast Regional Tournament in Orlando and the World Series, and oh by the way, traveling to the World Series host site about as far away as you can get in the continental US from Tallahassee, and in the end, made all of us proud beyond belief. College football is great, maybe not this season, but anyway, college football is great, but those teams include players from all over the state of Florida, certainly, and all over the nation. This team, though, represents all Tallahassee. They are Tallahassee residents. They are what the fabric of this community, as I said before, is all about. This is local pride at its finest. Though the team is wearing their World Series jerseys, during the regular season, all teams have one thing in common. All players throughout the league wear a cap with a T on it, like this one here, representing, of course, the great community that we play for. And now, as the league gets ready for its sixty-third season, the phenomenal tradition enjoyed by our league adds yet another incredible chapter to its legacy, this being our ninth World Series championship, thanks to the efforts of these young men and coaches Kelly, Smith, and Keister, as well as their parents, and the parents did sacrifice a great deal this summer, been there, done that, and many people who worked very hard behind the scenes to make this happen, including league president Lisa Behenna, I had to mention who it was told to, and our Board of Directors. So thank you again, Mayor Gillum, congratulations, by the way, and the City Commission for honoring your world champion, Tallahassee Leon Babe Ruth 15U Team. We've got a presentation also to the commission of the team photo right after they won.
Y'all can look right here? Thank you, Governor, I mean, Mayor, thank you so much. I'm getting ahead of myself. Some of you all might, if I do it correctly, might recognize this jingle because it is characteristic of our next honoree. So if I get it right, you recognize it. If I don't, don't boo me. We're making a difference. Yeah. Yeah. It is, Mr. Mayor, my absolute honor and privilege to read the proclamation recognizing our next honoree. He has been a stalwart in this community for as long as I can remember, and I've lived here for forty-five years now, and has made the difference in the spiritual lives of so many, but for the purposes of this evening's recognition, has made a difference in improving the quality of life of low-income citizens throughout the Tallahassee community and the Big Bend area. And that is none other than the Reverend Dr. Ernest Farrell. I never imagined, as I was growing up in Tallahassee and working in the community, that I would have the opportunity, after hearing so much about the good works that Reverend Farrell was doing in the community, would have an opportunity to, at some times, serve on his board at the Urban League, and firsthand observe the great work that he has done in improving the quality of life of so many citizens in the City of Tallahassee. And so this honor this afternoon is absolutely befitting of a person of his caliber, as he now he now turns over the reins of the leadership of the Urban League to a younger generation. Not too much younger, but he's only 30 himself. But Reverend Farrell, we want to certainly recognize you for all that you've done for the citizens of Tallahassee over your many years here in the community. And so the proclamation reads, whereas, a visionary, fateful servant, community leader, treasured human resource, former president of the National Primitive Baptist Convention USA and Florida State Primitive Baptist Convention, pastor of the St. Mary Primitive Baptist Church, president and chief executive officer of the Tallahassee Urban League, well-known in Leon County, Florida, and married to the former Mary E. Richardson, no relation, attended the public schools of Leon County and graduated from the original Lincoln High School, the proclamation here says "old," I was corrected on that, original Lincoln High School in 1962. And whereas, he was the first African-American cashier to be employed by Winn-Dixie Stores Company. We have that in common, Reverend, I was a bag boy at Winn-Dixie. He entered the United States Army in 1966 and was honorably discharged in 1968. He earned a Bachelor of Science degree in 1972 from Florida A&amp;M University in Sociology and a minor in Corrections. Reverend Farrell received an honorary doctoral degree in Human Letters from his alma mater, the Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University. Whereas, he excelled in three areas of leadership during his career, which included the church community, the business community, and of course, the Urban League community, social service community. His leadership in the church began when he was a youth, singing in the youth choir. And whereas, he successfully achieved the position of Chief Executive Officer of the Tallahassee Urban League, the Board of Directors appointed him to this position in 1973, and he served with honor and distinction. Through his leadership at the Tallahassee Urban League, thousands of individuals and families in Tallahassee and surrounding communities received many services, including housing, crime prevention, youth services, victim rights, emergency food and shelter, and much, much more. Whereas Reverend Ernest Farrell, a man of distinction and author of his first book, The Challenges of Leadership, the author is a man of God and a man of high integrity, a man who recognized the needs of his community and worked to resolve them, and a man who put his trust in God and worked diligently every day to make a difference in the lives of the people he served. Now therefore, I, Curtis Richardson, on behalf of the Mayor and City Commission of this great All-America City of Tallahassee, do hereby acknowledge the influence and impact of the Reverend Dr. Ernest Farrell. Let's give him a hand.
Next month, I'll be blessed to be 75, and a whole lot of change since I was officially conceived by my mother and the excitement they had for bringing me in the world. But I've seen our city grow, and I've seen it develop, all the way back when Mayor Ford was the first African-American mayor probably in the country. I've seen us grow, I've seen all of the things that we, the changes, the good days, the bad days, and we are not perfect, but we are better than any of the other cities that come close to being perfect. And I think that because of what we have been able to accomplish. In 1973, Dr. C.K. Steele and other representatives for the civic community had an issue that they wanted to resolve at the Winn-Dixie Stores, and the results of that issue was that in that community, in our community, there were no black cashiers. Now that seems probably irrelevant because cashiers may not be at the top of the list of things, but they had none, and so they boycotted the stores, and as a result, Ernest Farrell became the first African-American cashier. Now, that may sound a little interesting now, but at that time, we had about one, two hours worth of training to be able to stand and run a register. Where back in the day, it was not a computer register, at least it wasn't when I started. And so, as a result of the boycott, they put me in charge of the, of being on the register. My brothers and sisters and ladies and gentlemen, because of the significance of that, they were those persons who wanted to make sure that they would be a part of history, they were willing to stand in line while I picked on the computer, one pick at a time, until one person's grossness had been checked, but they stayed in the line until it was done. And I consider that a very important part of the beginning of my history in Tallahassee. As a result of that, I guess I became a little, little famous in Tallahassee, so Dr. B.L. Perry, the former president of Florida A&amp;M University, recommended me to become on the board of the Tallahassee Urban League. I'm a country boy, and I lived on, a few miles out on 90. I had no idea what the Urban League was. I thought it was a baseball team, like the team that we, but I fell in love with it because of what it stood for, the people that it served, the condition that our community was in, I had an opportunity to make an impact on that. And from that day to now, I have been very proud to be a part of the Urban League because of what it stands for, a diversity of people in the community, told us, everybody had an opportunity to participate, no matter what you, your profession, or if you were black or white, or Republican or Democrat or Independent. We wanted to make sure that it was a show of the Tallahassee community, that people were represented, and so I had an opportunity to do that. For 48 years, I've served in that capacity. I was asked, and then I'll be finished, why didn't you wait for 50 years? And of course, I replied, because 48 years came first. I am delighted and thankful for the City of Tallahassee for restoring this honor. Last month, we had a reception, a celebration at the Civic Center, and because all 450 people would not be able to come in to be a part of my guest tonight, so I won't have anybody with me, they were with me on the 16th of August at the Civic Center. Anybody here was there, raise your hand. I understand they had a great time, I had a great time being there. So God bless you, and thank you for the honor, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully soon to be governor.
Thank you to the Commission and to the public for that. Commissioners, we're now at the point of the meeting to hear from speakers on agenda items. Mr. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we do have several speakers tonight. The first of our speakers will be Ann Rowe. I will let her and other speakers know that they will speak from the podium in the center of the room. Each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. There will be a timer in front of you. It's a new timer, so you, in addition to green, yellow, and red, you'll actually see your minutes counting down, but I'll also remind you as, as the time gets there. She is speaking on item 1106, which refers to the constitutional amendments. She'll be followed by Alita Jarrett. You may begin.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you again. I, it's wonderful to see you all here today. My name is Ann Rowe. I live at 1213 Victory Garden Drive. I've been a resident of Tallahassee for 27 years. I hail from the great state of Maine. I am a survivor of violent crime. I was raped and sexually assaulted with a firearm three years ago yesterday, September 11, 2015. For those who are new here this afternoon, I, I need them to know and to remind you that my attacker was not convicted in a court of law, he was allowed to plea out to one count of sexual assault and battery with a firearm. I'm here today to ask the Commission's support for Marcy's Law for Florida. This will appear on November's ballot as Amendment 6. I was somewhat lucky because of my background as a crisis communications professional and public information officer by trade. I asked questions early on. I demanded to be briefed regularly for my case. When I wasn't, I made calls until I was provided answers. I wasn't, however, consulted or included on how my legal team should approach a trial or a plea. I was not allowed to face my attacker while reading my victim's statement at his plea hearing. I want and believe that every man and woman, every survivor of violent crime, should have the equal rights afforded to those accused of or convicted of a crime. I please ask you to support Marcy's Law for Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alita Jarrett, and then Erwin Jackson. Ms. Jarrett, speaking also on item 1106.
Thank you. My name is Alita Jarrett Cortinas. I live at 2934 Abbott's Ford Road in Tallahassee, excuse me. I am a homicide, a family, a family survivor of homicide. I lost my father, a doctor, and my brother, a nurse, to a brutal-for-hire slaying by my father's office manager, who is embezzling. She orchestrated her boyfriend to enter my family's home, the home I grew up in, for a hired hitman to shoot them in the head, assassination-style, while they were sleeping in their beds, and this is the home I grew up in. There were four defendants, two full trials and two pleas. The court proceedings went for 12 years in Miami-Dade County. In the first trial, the hired hitman, the jury found him guilty of first-degree murder, and I'm not aware of this, I wasn't told, in first-degree murder, in Florida, it's automatic life in prison without parole, and the judge immediately sentenced him at the end of the trial. I was not informed that I could speak. No one told me about a victim impact statement. In fact, to put insult upon injury, the defendant was permitted to address the family in court. He was unapologetic and blamed it on the other man. If I had constitutional rights to speak, to guarantee my right to be heard, I do not think that I would have been revictimised, and this horrible travesty in a courtroom would have not happened. At the trial, survivors were lost in the shuffle. They called it a complicated crime in a busy, you know, court down in Miami. But just because it's a complicated trial, I lost my right to be heard. If you endorse Amendment 6, Marcy's Law, victims will not have to worry about being overlooked in this justice system. On behalf of all victims and their families, I implore you to support Amendment 6. Do not let the criminal justice system revictimise us. It's my, as you all know, there are statutes regarding this, but if the statutes worked, I would not be here. Thank you for listening, and please formally support, endorse this Marcy's Law Amendment 6, so that me and other people will have the constitutional right to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Erwin Jackson, speaking on item 1104, Approval of Contract Extension for State Lobbying Contracts.
Waiting on the timer to reset. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff, Tallahassee truth teller. Want to talk on 11.04, about eight, eight and a half years ago, came up here, John Marks happened to be mayor, and I noticed that he was, just gotten elected, and I liked John, and I thought that was probably a pretty good guy, and I met a guy by the name of Sean Pittman. And after watching for a while, what you figured out was that Sean Pittman was an attorney and a kind of lobbyist and a campaign manager. He worked very hard going around to city contractors, raising a lot of money, which he then gave to John Marks, and he was able to take 10%, 15% of whatever he raises. Now, I don't have a problem with any of that. I do have a problem, though, when we have someone who's in the business of running campaigns, and it doesn't matter to me if it's Van Core Jones is on a good run right now, Gary Jordan, Scott Maddox, Sean Pittman, that's what they do. They raise money, they get their guy elected, and then this Commission, the new mayor, the new people who's elected, they want to show their appreciation, so they turn around and give city contracts back to the folks that helped put them in office, not the people that voted for them, but the individuals that gave them money. I would like to have proposed an ordinance, and if this group won't, I think their next City Commission will, that we should have an ordinance that prevents any contracts going to individuals who, city contracts, who were participating as a campaign manager, someone that was, and we can come up the definition, individuals such as Sean Pittman, Gary Jordan, Van Core Jones, and those professionals who gather a lot of money to propose, to facilitate one individual getting elected, and if they do that, then that's wonderful, but they should give up their individual right to get any city contracts, because there's obviously a conflict of interest, and it needs to be stopped. So I've only been at it for about eight and a half, nine years, but we are making good progress in other areas, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Edward Holyfield on item 904, which is Approval of Election of a Member of the TMH Healthcare Board of Directors. He'll be followed by Stanley Sims.
Can you reset this to zero? I haven't set it. Dr. Holyfield, I would like to add a little bit of context, and that is, I grew up in segregated Tallahassee. For 17 years, I was denied admission to TMH. TMH would rather me die than be admitted to that hospital, not just me, but any black person. And some black people did die. They're just as dead as those four black people that the museum in Montgomery said were lynched in Leon County. Fortunately, we have made some progress since then, but we need to make more. And so I raised the issue of this TMH Board of Directors, keeping in mind that we own that hospital. We own the land, we own the buildings, and we own everything inside the building. A 20-member Board of Directors existed at that hospital without a single black woman on the board, despite all the black infant mortality, all of the black maternal mortality in this community. TMH now wants to replace a black, black man on the board with a white man. They are missing an opportunity. This will reduce the black percentage on their Board of Directors to 10%, two blacks on a 20-member board. I suggest that we tell TMH that they can do better than. The population that TMH serves in that hospital is at least 30% black. Why should they want to snub the black community in this way? Why not go back to TMH and say, we strongly suggest, because we have oversight, we strongly suggest that you have at least one black woman on that board? You have seven white women, and Laurie, Laurie Dozier- You have seven white women, and Laurie Dozier was on that board forever. And when he came off the board, they replaced him with Kelly Dozier, his wife, a white woman. So is this some kind of family legacy? I don't think this is unreasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we want some black woman on that board, we want some poor people. There's not one person who lives in the black community on their Board of Directors. This should not be a country club Board of Directors.
Excuse me, that's three minutes?
It should, can I have an additional 30 seconds? You know, we should have-
Wrap it up, please.
Yeah. We should have another Board of Directors that includes the total community, all of the community. Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I don't think this is an unreasonable request, and I wish you well in your quest.
Thank you.
For the next governor of the state of Florida.
Thank you, Dr. Holyfield. Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Stanley Sims on item 1302, which is your public safety update. He'll be followed by Pat Tuthill.
Good afternoon, Mayor Diance. This is kind of cheating. I just said "public safety." But I do, I came before you tonight because I listened tonight when history was made here in Tallahassee, Florida. And I am, from the very beginning, was a Gwen Graham supporter. I respect the legacy that that family has contributed to Florida, and I'm healing. And I'm, I have, I cannot vote. I have never given to any campaign because I am an ex-felon. But Pastor Greg James and I are traveling to Orlando to assist in strategy of Amendment Four, where it's 1.6 million of us around Florida who have did our time, and we still cannot vote, but we pay taxes. And so I'm basically here in my new blue suit wishing you well.
On Amendment Four.
On Amendment, no, and wishing you well. And I made the mistake of underestimating the Pittman Law Firm, who is a very good client of mine, and I will not make that mistake again. And the reason I mention the Pittman Law Firm is because the Pittman Law Firm has a character that is clearly different than the other ones that have been mentioned here tonight by the Tallahassee truth. Because Mr. Sean Pittman is an individual, despite the positive things that he does around this state. I had a conversation with him, Mayor, and he said this to me when I said, "Sean, you know I love Gwen," and this is a hard battle for me. He said, "Stanley," he said, "anytime an individual comes to me with a dream and they want to make that dream possible, who am I to say no?" And when he said that, I remember the day when I was low on gas and turned into his not expecting him to allow me to do services, but he afforded me an opportunity. And so I'm just asking you, for us Graham supporters that are out there who are still crying and we're ready to get aboard, you know, we just, give us some motivation. We're very happy, we're, I'm very happy for you, Mayor, and I will be making a contribution into a race that I cannot vote for. Thank you.
Well, I will, thank you, Mr. Sims. I will treat those as comments on Amendment Four because this is the agenda speaker's part of the meeting. Your comments are noted, and I think as the commission assesses our endorsement of various constitutional amendments, your comments related to that will be taken advisedly.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Pat Tuthill on item 1106.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commission. My name is Pat Tuthill. I reside at 1005 East Seventh Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. And I'm here to speak and to urge you to support Amendment Six, Marcy's Law, in Florida's Constitution. I am a victim. I am a homicide survivor. My young daughter Peyton was brutally assaulted and murdered. I've been a supporter of Marcy's Law since the inception. I've been a supporter of constitutional amendments across the country since 2000. Florida is one of 15 states that does not have constitutional amendment for victims' rights. The very document, Florida's most powerful legal document, that should be protecting victims, ensure their rights, and the same as the accused, has not done that, has not stayed in step with what's happening across the nation. I urge you to not let victims continue to be revictimized. You've heard here today, and there's just a few stories, they go on and on throughout the state, that victims are, continue to be disregarded in the criminal justice systems, system, and have no voice. Although some may say it's in the Florida Constitution, we wouldn't be here today if that document was, those statutes were enforced. And those statutes can be changed from one legislature to the other. That's why I implore you not to give victims more rights, but to give them equal rights in standing in the state's most powerful legal document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mayor, that's the last speaker. We do have two individuals who are available to speak to questions on item 1205, but other than that, we have concluded our speaker portion of our meeting.
Great. Thank you for those who came to make your sentiments before the commission. Commissioners, we're now at the point in the meeting of the consent.
Move consent.
There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners, there were no items pulled from consent. We're now on city commission items, beginning with item 11.01.
I'll move 1101.
Second. There's a motion to accept 1101. Saying no questions, all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 1102.
Move the item.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, I apologize, Commissioner Maddox out of chamber unanimously. 11.03, airport advisory.
Move staff recommendations, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for staff.
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
One of the appointments, name is Alan Hansteen. I just want to make him sweat for a second. I'm good.
The dutiful Alan. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes, including Alan. I'm going to now invite Jamie Vampel from the Office of the Mayor to make presentations to the commission on items 1104, 1105, 1106.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, good evening, good afternoon. 4:59, I'll call it afternoon. We won't rush the day. We'll start with 11.04, and that is, as we've discussed, the state general and state utility lobbying contracts. In 2016, those went out for RFP. Ron Book PA and Bill Peoples PA won those respectively. The contract duration were two years with three one-year extensions. My recommendation to you this evening is to honor that contract and use the first one-year extension for both the state and the state utility lobbying contracts. Thank you.
And Commissioners, if I could just weigh in just a moment on this one. This is the first of what are three potential extensions, and when staff came to me about going out and doing process, understanding that this is my last year as mayor, I did not want to commit the city to a three-year contract that the next administration frankly should come in, establish its own priorities around that. This one year will get us at least through the next legislative session and will allow the next administration of this commission to come through, evaluate the applicants on their own guidelines, and then enter into a new contract should they choose to. But this gets us at least this next commission through the first legislative session of that commission.
We have approval.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Move approval of item 11.05.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And finally, Mr. Vampel.
Yes, sir. This one's me as well. Commissioner-
After you.
Constitutional.
Commissioner Ziffer, I believe, in the July meeting expressed interest in, as a body, taking positions on the forthcoming constitutional amendments. As I've spoken with each, each of you individually, either yourselves or your offices, my slate is on the agenda item as follows. My recommended action is to support Amendments Four, Six, and Thirteen, oppose Amendments One, Five, and Twelve, and take no action regarding Amendments Two, Three, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven. And for your records, and your information, rather, we have done an outline that is in the agenda item as well. And I appreciate you bearing with me, just as a personal note, as we sort of navigated this with the Supreme Court of Florida, as they have both taken amendments off, put them back on, and special thank you to the folks in my office, Mike Alfano and Kirsten De Souza, for helping us out with that as well.
Commissioner, thank you for that. Commissioner Ziffer.
Just a quick comment to thank you. Working through this process, you did an outstanding job of kind of navigating the things that are city-related, that are municipal government-related, and I think you did an outstanding job. For those of you that came today to speak about specific ones, particularly Amendment Six and Marcy's Law, thank you for coming. I know that wasn't easy. Clearly, the rights of victims need to be heard, and we thank you for coming and having said that. I'll move the item.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Commissioners, I would align myself with the comments of Commissioner Ziffer on that and just not only on Marcy's Law and support for that, but obviously the need to raise to the awareness of citizens the tax proposal on the ballot and the implications it has for counties all across the state of Florida and as a product of that, cities. And then just want to throw my full weight of support behind Amendment Four, which I think is important and is consistent with steps that this commission has taken to widen the doors of opportunity for former felons. Want to acknowledge our partnership with Bethel Ready for Work along those lines and a number of other groups here in the community that are working on this issue rather diligently. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second on the items. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
I just wanted to point out, I know that this is going to be a really confusing slog through the ballot for a lot of people, and I'm hoping that part of our endorsement includes at least making sure that people can access the, these amendments that we either opposed or supported so they would see what these are.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, it's very confusing, as people have been saying, with the numerous issues on one, you know, one amendment has three or four different things, and so just wanted to make sure of that. But one thing that I wanted to point out to people is that if you have a hem valued above 125, you will not be getting the benefit of this amendment. And I think that's something that's very important for people to be aware of.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Yeah, just to expand on that, when you see an amendment that would allow for income tax, excuse me, property tax exemption, that's not what this is. This is unfair. It only applies to very few, and what it means probably ultimately to the rest is a tax increase. So be mindful of that if you're listening, pay attention to it, read about it because it's not for everybody, and the majority will not feel that. In fact, the majority will probably in the end feel the tax increases.
Yeah. That's a great point, and different counties have already done the work of illustrating, and I think we ought to do the same thing frankly here in Tallahassee, Leon County, the impact that this will have on, I mean, de minimis by way of benefit for the citizen and pretty excruciating for school districts and for county governments and to some extent city governments.
Yep.
That really do rely on these as resources to fund the government and so, and to fund services, forget the government, to fund critical need services for our community. So there is a motion and a second on the item. Jamie, thank you for your work and the staff's work on this. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes, Commissioner.
Jamie, can I ask you one question before you go? So what will be our next step in informing our citizens about the action that we've taken?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where we stand on those amendments?
Sure. You know, I think, I think it's an opportunity, first and foremost, we're going to be pushing this out hard on social media, letting folks know that we've done this, and I'm going to work with Allison Ferris and our communications shop to ensure that we can get it on the website as well and to let folks know that this is the official position of the commission, and also some breakdowns that we've done, that our staff has done in terms of what these will actually do. To Commissioner Ziffer's point, a lot of the holdup on the Supreme Court has been confusing language-related and folks saying one thing when it actually does something very different. So we'll do our best to make sure that we get a clear message out, talking about the real impacts of these amendments on everyday folks.
And if there are, you know, if there is ambiguity to staff about what education looks like, I'm sure they'll come to us and sort of ask our way in on what we think is within the bounds of what the law allows.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, we're now on introduction of ordinances. I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12.01 is, covers two ordinances. The first is introduction of ordinance number 18-0-27, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-226, 21-227, 21-228, 21-229, 21-230, 21-231, 21-234, 21-235, 21-236, 21-237, 21-238, 21-240, 21-241, and 21-243 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to electric service, including applicable charges and rates, provided for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Next is ordinance number 18-0-28. It is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-432, 21-452, 21-453, 21-454, 21-457, and 21-460 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to gas service, including applicable charges and rates, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Next is item number 12.02. It's also an introduction of ordinance, ordinance number 18-Z-21, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in single-family, two-family residential R3 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and separability and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. The next item is item number 12.03. This is the introduction of ordinance number 12-Z-23, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in urban pedestrian-1UP1 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and separability and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing scheduled for September 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. The next item is item number 12.04. It is the introduction of ordinance number 18-Z-24, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in residential preservation-1RP1 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and separability and providing an effective date. The first- and for, providing an effective date. The first and first public hearing scheduled for September 24, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 14, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. The next item is the intro, is item number 12.05. It is the introduction of ordinance number 18-Z-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development Concept Plan on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 24, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Ta, City of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Commissioners, without objection, we'll show all items introduced. Thank you, city attorney. Commissioners, we're now at policy formation, and we'll begin with item 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item requests your acceptance of the Frenchtown placemaking plan. The plan has been in development for the last 16 months, with planning staff working very closely with the Frenchtown community, members of which are here tonight. The plan before you is the community's vision for moving Frenchtown forward. Wayne Teder is going to provide a brief introduction. Devin Levin's in our planning department, who's done great work on this, is here to give you the, the depth of the presentation. And I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Harris is in the audience. She's spent a lot of time with this. Ms. Scott as well. I see Ms. Collier Brown and Mr. Bellamy. I'd just like to acknowledge them and, and thank them for their energy and effort into this and their passion for Frenchtown. So with that, I'd like to ask Wayne to go ahead and, and introduce the item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Over time, there have been significant accomplishments in the Frenchtown community. The City Commission has facilitated the development of the Carolina Oaks Residential Development, the redevelopment of Ebony Gardens, the shelter relocation, and the addition of the Farmer's Market. But there is still a lot to be done in the Frenchtown community. I've been telling Ms. Annie Harris for a long time, and probably too long, that we'll take little steps. And before we realize it, those little steps will turn into major strides in their community. She's been really patient with me, and I appreciate that. But tonight, I think we can honestly say that we don't have to be limited to small steps any longer. And I say that because of three things. Number one, out of community concerns with the sale of a city property in the Frenchtown community, you turn those community concerns into an opportunity for staff to reach out to the neighborhood to develop this vision plan that Devin's going to go over tonight. You approved the sale of city land that will now put $535,000 into the Frenchtown community for improvements that the Frenchtown community thinks are important. Lastly, through the negotiations with the county regarding the CRA, the interim city manager was able to obtain an expansion of the CRA district to include the South City area. It also extended the timeframe of the district from 2030 to 2038. When you approve the expansion of that district and the time extension through the interlocal agreement, that means there's going to be an additional $29 million that can be programmed into Frenchtown, the community, the Bond community, and South City. That's a big deal. We now have the community's vision. We have a dedicated group of community leaders that have been leading this vision that's now ready to lead that charge. And now we have a funding source that now we can make some major strides in the community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Devin to go over the plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners. If you recall, back in April 2017, this chamber was, a number of residents from the Frenchtown community were here, expressing concerns over development that was in progress, or development that was proposed for the community. And they were really asking what was a tool that we could have to make sure that the character and scale of Frenchtown survived and was preserved and moved forward. That's why we're here tonight, is to show you the tool that we developed, and I'm sure you all have seen the plan already. But I want to go through this a little bit, so you understand the complexity of what we put together over the last 18 months. First, let's talk about the steering committee. As soon as we left that meeting that night, within about a month, we were able to establish a committee with those concerned citizens that were here at that meeting. Reese mentioned them that were here. We also have Maisha Mitchell here as well. I want to make sure that she's acknowledged. This has been a team effort. Everyone has been really, really awesome to work with. I'd say, this has really been a way that we have been able to just be a team and collaborate on this. I feel like here tonight, I'm really coming on behalf of the citizens more than as a city staff, and I just want to be able to say that. And I think that.
Pretty good, man.
Community involvement. So just to kind of give you a little bit of idea, how was the community engaged? November of 2017, we did a four-day charrette. Charrette's a word that I've been asked not to use by the community anymore, because those were community meetings, and those are easier to understand. So we had four community meetings for four days, where we talked about the immediate needs from the citizens, what were the concerns over the recent growth, issues in the community, and then what were your preferences for the future? How do you want to see Frenchtown keep their scale and character moving forward? As a committee, we brought this back to the committee. The committee looked at it, validated the responses we heard from the other citizens as well, and noticed that the committee and the citizens were on the same page. Everything they had going, everyone was noticing the same things. So moving forward with November, once we had this established, we started drafting the placemaking plan. This took us quite a bit of time, as you can see from the timeline here. We went from November to August of this year. We wanted to make sure that when we were working through this, that we were able to get as much input as we could from the community. You see really formal community involvement here. It goes beyond this. We had meetings at dinner tables within the community. We had meetings at the market, at the art walks. We were having conversations in my office. I mean, they, everyone was coming. We were all talking together. And then we went back to Lincoln Center in August of 2018, and presented the draft to the community, and got that final feedback to bring it here to you all tonight. I want to take a little bit of time to make sure that we look at each of the goals. So I'm going to go through all these individually, so that everyone here understands what we're looking at, and those that are listening. So plan goals, we have four main goals within this plan. Goal one is to cultivate the community character to foster long-term viability. Goal two is to identify community enhancement strategies. Goal three, enhance and promote the identity and history of Frenchtown. And goal four, identify opportunities to improve mobility and connectivity. Each of these goals have objectives that go with them. Those objectives are how we're going to achieve what we have in this plan, and how to get to the vision that the community is looking for. Objective 1.1 is probably the most important objective in the plan, because that's why we were here tonight, when the citizens came out, was the existing zoning that was in the neighborhood. That zoning is what allowed the development to occur that's currently happening within the community. We've already started working with our comp plan division to start moving forward and looking at the zoning for the neighborhood, and how that zoning can be changed or improved to fit the character of the community. We want to transition the steering committee to the Frenchtown working group, so that way we can have a committee that already has been working on the plan. They're ready to go, ready to get started. We move forward with this group to continue moving the plan forward. And then establish a community network to coordinate all organizations of Frenchtown. We found out, studying through this plan, that there's multiple organizations doing things within the community. Those organizations always cross paths. There's a lot of good things happening from each of those organizations. A lot of them do have similar missions, but no one's really talking. So we really wanted to put an objective in there that would allow us to get, get one organization that could make sure that all those organizations talk to each other. Goal two, identifying community enhancement strategies. Objective 2.1 is to forge stronger relationships with neighbors and involve residents in creating a sustainable future. One of the things that we heard is, Frenchtown used to be a place where you could go next door and get that cup of sugar from your neighbors, because you knew who your neighbor was. It's not so much that way anymore. But the community still thinks, knows, they can go back to that and have neighbors that they can walk next door and get the cup of sugar. Small-scale investments in Frenchtown's built environment and improvement to neighborhoods, buildings, and vacant lots. I know all of you have been to Frenchtown. You've drove through the community. You've seen houses that are in need of repair. You've seen vacant lots that are overgrown. This is a really big issue to the community, because in beautification efforts, looking at this, it shows that if we could beautify some of this, it would really change the appearance of what Frenchtown is and what Frenchtown can offer. Moving forward from that, objective 2.3 is to explore opportunities to remove dilapidated housing. Once those, basically whatever we're looking at in 2.2, when we've exhausted those options, 2.3 would be the next option, would be to see what houses are beyond repair. Is there something that we can put in place to really remove these houses and allow opportunities for more affordable housing options within the community? Opt, objective 2.4, develop design guidelines. This is something that the community has asked for for years. There's some guidelines to create that character and scale that they're looking for, and keep their character and scale. We've already started working on this, and if you'll notice, in the plan, in the appendix, there's a few pages of an outline of what the design guidelines would look like. This is something that the community's been very supportive of, and they, that's one of the things they want to see move forward very fast. Moving into goal three, enhance and promote the history, or the identity and history of Frenchtown. The, the first one here is to develop a concept and enhance the entryway to Frenchtown. This is something that you, as the CRA, allocated $350,000 towards back in 2016. And this would be enhancements going from Tennessee Street to Brevard Street along the Macomb Corridor. Looking at objective 3.2, explore.
Can I ask you a quick, now will that be consistent with the Bethel Empowerment Foundation development? Or is that going to be incorporated into their plan?
It would, it would be completely separate from that plan. It, it'll take in the ideas of what they're doing along that corner.
Yeah.
With streetscapes, but this is really to enhance crosswalks. We're looking at, it could be pedestrian crossings in that area, really enhancing the streetscape specifically for the sidewalk areas along Macomb, because they need more pedestrian amenities.
Okay.
But not related to that development.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not at cross purposes, that all of the planning is being coordinated.
And we also have Keith Bowers as part of our steering committee.
Okay.
He's there with us.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Objective 3.2, explore opportunities to create activities and amenities around Carter-Howstrong Park. This is our idea of a Lake Ella concept for Carter-Howstrong. We're looking at, the, the area has room that you could bring food trucks in, bring vendors in, those types of things. And this would just be a way to be able to express, you know, we have a space to use, let's use it for the community, and, and you do something that they would like to see there. Objective 3.3, as a collective community, identify the assets that create the character of Frenchtown. When we were going out, and you'll see this in the plan as well, early on, we have a list of special places. The community has identified a lot of special places. And working with groups like Miss Altamese Barnes with the Riley Museum, those places can be really shown off to the people that are coming into the community, that want to see the community. And we have places like the Heritage Hub, where we can hold that information, or Ash Gallery, and places like that. Objective 3.4, explore opportunities to share Frenchtown's history through storytelling and plays. This is something that we kind of stole the idea from Colquitt, Georgia, where they do a series of plays called Swamp Gravy. Two times a year, they have this play where they tell stories of the community in a setting, in an old cotton mill that they had. And it's just a real way for the community to get together and share the identity of their community. Southern Velvet Cafe, which is a new coffee shop that's opened in Frenchtown, they've offered up to say that they would like to be a host, to be able to host some of these storytelling. So we already have some people in the community willing to get involved. Objective 3.5, design, create, and install a historical Frenchtown piece in the plaza at the standard. This goes back to whenever the, the property that was for sale on Macomb Street came in, one of the negotiations that was made was that $50,000 would be put towards a, a historical piece within the plaza. I want to thank you, Commissioner, for making that happen. This is something that we've already started designing. We have a separate team with some of the steering committee members and citizens that are each working on this. We've come up with a preliminary design, and we're going to be moving forward with that, to hopefully have that ready to install when the development opens. Goal four, identify opportunities to improve mobility, connectivity, and livability. These two really go together, because they're both about infrastructure. So identifying opportunities to improve infrastructure in the community, and implement traffic calming measures on Brevard Street. We see these objectives really as that opportunity that we can look for some strategic acquisitions that the city and the CRA could take part of, to really expand what we can do with our infrastructure within this area. So I talked a lot about the plan, where the plan is, but this isn't all we've been doing. We've been working the entire time. Yeah, we've been drafting the plan, but there's a lot that's going on in the community right now. If you remember, back in 2016, we did the Better Block project. And I know a few of you came out to Better Block when we were doing that. And there was a temporary bike lane that was installed. Anyone remember the temporary bike lane? Supposed to last that weekend, and it ended up lasting us about six months with the materials that we used. This became a staple for the community of a path, because at the time, there was no sidewalk running that area in Macomb. And it really made it easier for folks that were biking to move in that way. Working with Steve Schaefer's shop, and we'll have to give some credit to Steve on this, we were able to find a resurfacing project. And with that resurfacing project, we now have bike lanes going north and south from Brevard Street to Tennessee Street along Macomb. Another thing that came out of the Better Block project was that the, the traffic speed on Macomb between Brevard and Fourth was much higher than the posted 25 speed limit. Working with Steve Schaefer's shop, again, they went out and verified for us that that speed was much higher. And with the input from the community, they were able to put speed bumps on that street to slow it down. And I've been out there, and the citizens will vouch that that's, the speed is much slower there now. We also have things going on with the Frenchtown Heritage Hub. I know everyone knows what's going on there. We have Kitchen Share. We have the Market. They've just continued to do great things, and we're happy to have them with us. And then Ms. Annie Harris has Ash Gallery, but she's also started the art walk. And the art walk came directly from events that happened with Better Block. This is happening once a month right now, and she's looking, because it's going so well, to bump that up to two times a month. And if you go out there, this is a, one of the pieces you see here is from one of the children that she has. A lot of children are getting involved in the art. So it's something that's really good for the community that we're seeing. So you see, we have a lot of momentum right now, a lot of stuff going on, and we want to continue that momentum. We don't want to stop. We want to make sure that whatever we do now, we keep moving forward. So we figured that the way to do this was to really put the projects into kind of five areas. We have projects that are currently underway, which would have been something like the bike lanes. It would be similar to the speed bumps. Another thing that we're working on right now is to get, within the historic area of Frenchtown, sign toppers that say "Frenchtown," so you know when you're in the historic area. Those are ones that could happen, probably within, you know, about three months, we could get those completed. Potential short-term projects that would be City of Tallahassee initiated. These could take up to about six months, but that would be repainting crosswalks and things of that nature, upgrading LED lighting to make the lighting brighter in the neighborhood, because we've heard that. And then, we have these potential short-term neighborhood initiating projects. And I have a little story behind this one. Every time we would come to a meeting, the committee would say, somebody ought to go do this, clean this up over here. Somebody ought to go do this over here. And we all looked around the table, and we said, well, we are somebody. So we made this list of what we call our "we oughta" items. And so we listed out about 30 things that we ought to, as the community, take care of. And some of those are organizing a neighborhood walk that cleans up, using digitality to record things within the neighborhood, and just other little simple things, like creating maybe a tool library, where your neighbor could borrow a tool from you. We have some intermediate items that we've talked about, and those would be a little bit more long-term. That was those acquisitions I was talking about, looking at what type of properties or roadways or right-of-ways that we could use within the area. And then long-term projects would be more of those infrastructures, like looking at Macomb Street and Brevard Street, to see what we could do for streetscaping initiatives there. Funding. Talk a little bit about the funding. So I've mentioned it early on, that we have $50,000 towards the historical piece within Frenchtown. That $50,000, we know, is already here, but we're asking tonight to have that allocated, to make sure that it goes towards that historical piece. We have the $350,000 that's been allocated by the CRA to enhance the entryway to Frenchtown. And then we also have the $485,000 set aside from the sale of the Macomb property, and we're here to ask that that be allocated directly to this plan as well. Working with the community, we listed a lot of the priorities that we want to talk about. And with those priorities, I, we as a team decided that we needed to ask the community, what was the three top priorities moving forward out of this plan? And the steering committee, when asked, what is the most important to address first in the community with the current funding available, that being the $485,000, these are the three that they identified. Create an affordable housing initiative in order to both rehab existing housing and construct new housing. Identify properties that the City of Tallahassee, CRA, could purchase for new and commercial housing uses. And then enhancements to Macomb Street streetscape, that being the sidewalks, lighting, street trees, traffic calming, street parking, et cetera. And those directly relate to our objectives 2.2, 2.3, and 4.2. With that, I want to take a pause, and I'd like to ask a couple of our steering committee members to come up, and just talk to you a little bit about the process and where we've been. Ms. Annie Harris is going to come up, and she's going to talk a little bit about how this plan moves Frenchtown forward. And then Ms. Daryl Scott's going to come up, and talk about how this is different from other plans that have been done in Frenchtown previously.
Hey.
I'm Annie Harris, and I first want to thank one of your commissioners for just really hanging in there with us at all of the meetings, and was dedicated to that. But let me thank all of you for the, the opportunity to serve on that committee. I moved away from Tallahassee in 1987. And Frenchtown during college days was the place to go and really have some fun, and Friday night entertainment, and good food, and all of that. And when I returned in, in the 90s, I was totally shocked, because it was weed, grass, and liquor bottles. And so I lived out Thomasville Road, but I just was not happy. And so I moved into Town and Country Park, and I still was not happy. So I decided I would go to Frenchtown and see if I could buy a piece of property and maybe do a little painting. And everybody said, you have lost your mind. And I, I remember buying the little house on And I remember buying the little house on the street where I live now, on Georgia Street. And I remember pulling all the grass and picking up liquor bottles. I didn't know so much liquor could be had like that. Cigarette lighters in the back, you name it. And about 10 or 15 drunks across the street looking at me, wondering if I had lost my mind. But I knew I hadn't because I wanted to be a part of whatever revitalization was going to take place. And I decided that I would paint the house and plant some, not a real plant, a bunch of flowers. They're all green, where if you ever visit, you'll see mostly green. But the one thing I noticed that neighbors started leaving plants on the porch to say, "I see what you're trying to do and we want to be a part of it." And I wasn't afraid, I really wasn't. I tried to get to know the people on the streets. And I remember, I can't remember the commissioner that was living at the time and it was five properties left on that street. That was it. And so I asked that the city commission not tear down those properties. And I want to thank you for not doing that because it became home to me. I decided I wanted to live in Frenchtown, I wanted to be a part of it, whatever. And I want you to know, the citizens welcomed me, you know, they let me know I wasn't born in Frenchtown, but they, you know, I think they loved me pretty good and said, "You are welcome."
And you didn't attend originally.
That's it, that's it. I was not one of the originals, but they really welcomed me in. And so, we have been working hard to continue to keep pace. We started with the Frenchtown Heritage Fest. And I've never seen so many people from the community come and said, "We enjoy it, we love it, what can we do?" And they were all ages. And so I thought with that, and the commitment the commission made with $5,000, and they told me, "You got to raise the rest to get it done." So I got busy and with the help of citizens in Frenchtown, we did. That was the first thing we did really big. And the garden and all of that had already started. So, we just decided that with your help and with some commitment of dollars and time, I have to tell you, I really love Wayne because Wayne sat outside of one of the commission meetings in downtown City Hall and said, "Let's get together and see what we could do, see what we can do to help." And I appreciate it because I can pick up the phone and call. And I want you to know, we as citizens are going to give our part and our time to help make it happen. And we just thank you so much for all that you do. And I'm not going to take that much time. But I love where I live and when you see that Art Walk, I want to tell you about that little painting from a kid. I made one of the commitments with the children that I wanted to have children, you know, they doodle anyway. You don't realize what those kids can do. And the idea is that you don't pay anything to do a little pop-up. And I was talking to these kids and I said, "You are welcome to come and do that and bring your parents." And this little boy came and his parents were with him and he starts selling his Christmas cards and everything and he looked really worried and he looked at his parents and he said, "I need some help over here." So the idea is to let young people see how they can become entrepreneurs and make sure they know what it's like to exhibit and take charge and be a part of. And that's one of the things that I'm working hard to do, to keep that going, encourage the children and encourage the parents to come and take a part and old people like me to continue working to show and set that example. So let me say thank you again and you are welcome to have coffee at my house anytime. And thanks Nancy for hanging in there with us and coming down to meet me instead of me always having to come here. So thanks so much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scott.
And we have Ms. Daryl Scott coming up now.
Daryl said, "Get up and introduce me." I understand.
I'm Daryl Gillum.
Gillum Scott.
And I'm going to start spelling it G.I.L.L.U.M. So I can get those interviews that I told you about.
Be careful what you wish for.
I want to give special thanks to Devon. Devon has mad skills, mad people skills and research skills. Because you can mention something and when we meet again, he can tell you all about it and it's like, whoa, okay. Got a little librarian in him like me. Anyway, last time I was, oh, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller. I have to call her Commissioner Miller because if I try to say Nancy, the next thing that comes out of my mouth is Wilson. So, and I love Nancy Wilson so now. Okay, Commissioner Miller listened to us, you know. She listened to our stories, she laughed with us, laughed at some of us, you know. She asked questions, but she has that unique ability to, in a minute, she's going to bring you back on point. You don't even see it coming and you don't feel it, but you know that the last thing you said was a story. Now you're talking about what's on this piece of paper, so I applaud that. Everybody can do that. Last time I spoke with you, I was a little upset because I talked about the loss of my sense of place. I didn't feel that anymore. So I was angry, you know, and I had to take a minute and regroup and stop. And when you said "placemaking", I was like, "Oh, no", you know. And then, that little librarian said, "You might want to sit down and look that word up." And I did, my research, same thing. Sense of place, placemaking. I lost my sense of place, placemaking, I'm making a place, you know. Realizing that the Frenchtown of my youth is gone. It's gone, but life goes on. This plan is unique in that this was or is collaborative partnership at its best. Can't get any better than this. We listened to each other, didn't always agree, but we discussed it, you know. And it was a beautiful, it is a beautiful experience, you know. It's, we have city, we have the community, we had the Better Block events, we had the charrettes or the community meetings. And, you know, people find out what you're doing or what you're involved in, you know, and they stop you and they tell you, you know. We reviewed the other plans that we've done and a lot of that was incorporated. But this was, the partnership was so unique. That's not something that we were used to, where we all sat down at the table, city and community, and we were equal. You know, of course, we had to have somebody to keep us on point of, we'd be telling stories forever, you know. But we appreciate that. Glasses on top, I can't see anyway. But I do want to thank you. And it's a great plan, beautiful pictures. And Frenchtown is a beautiful community. Some of the aerial shots are especially beautiful. But everything's coming along well, we have that momentum going and we're going to keep it going. We promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Scott and Ms. Harris both for being willing to come and speak today. Thank you both. So with that, just to kind of close this out, we want to talk about the recommended actions. You have those in front of you, I know you've seen those. We're recommending that you take four actions and that's Option 1, accept the placemaking plan. Option 2, allocate that $50,000 to make sure that it is allocated towards the historical piece. Option 3 is allocate the $485,000 from the sale of the McComb property. And just to expand on that a little bit, we've listed the priorities here on the slide so you can see those priorities from the plan. And what we want to make sure is that if there's any time that we can find another project that we can piggyback on, we want to be able to do that within this project. So, we want to be able to make sure that anything that we can use the $485 for, we can bring back before the commission and the CRA to get some guidance on being able to use that funding. And then, the last thing that we want to ask for is that you direct staff to seek funding from the CRA to implement the plan as needed. As I said, we're going to look for options like we did with Steve Schaefer's group to try to find places where we can bring these two things together, bring multiple things, three or four things together to make sure it happens. And what I leave you with is, this is an opportunity for us to really use the CRA in a way that it was intended to be used.
Awesome. Well, well done, all the way around. I can't, I can't thank you all enough for, first of all, I heard you describe Annie Harris as patient. That is a new one on me, Annie Harris, the patient. And my play cousin, Daryl Gillum Scott. And really, all those who contributed and to my colleague, Commissioner Miller, thank you for just diving in. You, since you have joined this commission, have talked consistently about placemaking and strengthening our neighborhoods and frankly, places of destination, but also their homes. I've done a little bit of traveling around the state of late and I have heard frankly, in too many places, this conversation has taken place once everything is lost, once all is gone, once everybody who once had an affinity and a connection to a place have all either been bought out or they've died off and the next generation has turned the property over and so you no longer have a sense of the place. You all saw this commission, its priorities in the city, but specific to this area sliding, and you got us all back on course and we thank you for that. But I think I mostly thank you for being builders. There are enough people who want to destroy, who want to take down. It's so good to encounter people in our city who want to build and build up and y'all exhibit that here. So, I'm proud to support all of the options that are here in the agenda item. And most importantly, looking forward to replicating this conversation at the CRA and the same kind of energy that we are experiencing here, love, appreciation, commitment to, that we also start to exhibit that there as well. Commissioner Ziffer.
I'm going to, there are two other folks that I know that want to say something here. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Miller and congratulate her on her job well done. And also, folks in Frenchtown for hanging in there with us, kind of a bumpy road, but here we are. So having said that, I'll move Options 1 through 4 and pass it off to remaining.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Richardson, and we'll let you close, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I had a couple of questions. Did you all also discuss possibly incentivizing the ownership of African-American owned businesses in the Frenchtown community? You know, that was the commercial hub of Tallahassee for a long time and we've lost a lot of that. Was that part of the discussion? Or is it something you all can consider if it? Okay. All right. And then the other question that I have is, in areas like the D Streets, are we going to look at improvements to those? Jim, did you, did you want to? Okay. The D Streets, for those who don't know, would be Dover, Dent, Dunn, Delaware. Yeah.
We, I'm Jim Bellamy and I live at 532 West Georgia Street and I am from Georgia Street, born and raised, own Georgia Street. Yes, we did, we talked about the D Streets. As a matter of fact, we started off a conversation, I think it was Commissioner Ziffer was the first one, we talked about it. But we work with, um...
Bill?
Bill, 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 I forgot your name, Bill Wilson. And what we did was, Bill was asking, because he's a developer and he has built, and we were discussing housing in the neighborhood. And Jim, I mean, Bill wanted to know, he said, "Well, where, what do you think would be the best place for us to start?" And I had been watching it for years, looking at Dent Street, Dover Street, Dunn Street, all in there doing. So what I did was, I took them over there that day and we saw it and it's perfect. Because if we can do that, then we can start, you know, like we call it block by block. We want to start a block at a time. If we can do that block and then move west from that block, we can really begin to do some things in the community. And we did, and we did just talk about the businesses too, Curtis, but one, I mean, Commissioner. But one of the things that we realized is that commercialization and retail business is different from the way it used to be. We talked more about pop-up businesses in the community. So, you know, we can have a lot of people involved, a lot of different businesses around in the neighborhood.
Well, what came to mind for me was particularly the fact that Daryl and Lynn Ann with Strong &amp; Jones chose to keep their business in the community when they moved from, you know, where they were located.
Right.
Mutaki Akbar, Attorney Akbar locating his business in the Frenchtown area.
And he was a part of this process too.
Yeah. So, that's what brought that to mind. I mean, if we could incentivize or encourage the establishment of more African-American owned businesses like...
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what kind of concerned us a lot because the zoning over there now is mostly all CU and CU 45, which means that we're talking about multi-level positions rather than residential. So, I mean, that kind of gives us a problem, but, you know, that's something we have to deal with.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you all covered it all and Commissioner Miller, I want to thank you because you volunteered for that. I mean, you weren't appointed or given any supplement for doing it and I certainly appreciate it. As I've said before, Frenchtown certainly has a very special place in my heart. It's where my family had a business for a long time, Bob and Annie Richardson. And my father attended Original Lincoln and graduated from there. So, the Frenchtown area has a personal significance for me as well as what it has done for our community generally. So, thank you all so much for...
And I'd like to thank you too, Commissioner Miller. And I'd like to thank the rest of you for giving us the opportunity to do this. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the festival, which is coming up again this year on October 13. And we're hoping that if people come out because we're also going to have the ribbon cutting on the 11th, on Thursday because the chairman will come out on Saturdays. We have ribbon cutting for Kitchen Share, which is our commercial kitchen. And we got our first certification last weekend, so we're getting ready now to really start bringing patrons in so we can get to moving on that. We're going to create a lot of jobs with it.
I know you will.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim, for your work, man, it means a lot. Our Shiro Hero, Commissioner Miller.
And as Mr. Bellamy leaves, I want to say, the Kitchen Share is just an incredible accomplishment. I'm so proud of it, proud of what they've done there. And when I came to the point where I asked you to let me do this, I knew that there was enough leadership in Frenchtown for them to define their own plan. And one of the things that I wanted to know, I wanted them to do the work. I wanted the people in Frenchtown to come forward and give their input to staff and define their own plan as they wanted it to see. Because that night with the standard, we had so many people here who were saying, "This is not what we want, this is not what we want." Well, now we have a written document that tells us what people really want to see. One of the things you'll be seeing in the future is more work from the planning department on their, on what in your books, and for heaven's sakes, please look at your books. I mean, I insisted that they deliver one to all of your, this is it, to all of your offices, just for you to read because every single page of this has been arrived at through the work of these residents that you're seeing. I think I'm going to take this moment to say, "Thank you for sticking with the project." And when people, if anybody dared miss a meeting, I asked Devon to please go visit them personally in their office or in their home, whatever was convenient for them because their input was what we needed in order to do this plan. Annie Harris, honestly, nobody will ever be able to thank you enough for all that you've done for the area. And Daryl Scott is the historian of the century, literally. She has got so much history, she knows everything that's ever happened in Frenchtown. And so if you ever need to know history, honestly, she needs to be consulted. And then combine that with Altamis' more broad experience. Maisha, Mutaki Akbar, Dorothy Bowie, Jim Bellamy, Keith Bauer, Reverend Rudy Ferguson, he was wonderful. He would come and listen, he's got such a quiet, strong presence. And when we needed to know his thoughts, he offered them up. Richard Dusenberry. So, folks have really worked super hard on this. It is their plan, they have developed it, and Devon has made sure that that was the way this was carried out. On page 16, you'll see that he has gone through, he and the staff in planning, and I want to also shout out Wayne. Wayne Tatter gave this committee as much support, staff support, as they needed, whatever they needed, graphic design. You know, it was just really, is Sean, was it Sean that was your other planner who helped you with this? So they were determined to make this everything that it could possibly be, but there are two big pages of all of the documents that have been developed in the past that have lent, informed on where, what people's wishes were as time has gone on. The most important thing in that context, too, is that these are all plans that have been written, and we're all waiting, and it took a long time for me to convince these folks on this committee that this time we meant business, that this time there was actually money on the table that could support the plan. And we did whatever we lacked. I was gonna work hard to get it, to make sure. That was my job, to figure out how we could fund their plan. Because for, 1983 is the first study, so they have been waiting for a long time for this. So I implore you, in my absence, when I'm not here, after November, the end of November, to please maintain the bond that you're going to make with them tonight, when you approve these options and support the staff, and make this sense of place plan really, really happen. You know, I've been upset in the past over the fact that we go and we get everybody all thrilled in different parts of town, and the planning department writes us beautiful plans, and then they sit. And that's, this time, I don't want that to be the case, and I don't think it will be, because we've got a whole bunch of people. We're gonna have a working group that's ongoing. We're gonna have committed staff. And I just, I really have high hopes for this, and have to say that out of my very brief and infant, my planning career is just an infant, but this is certainly something that I will always be proud of having been a part of. And I appreciate the fact that you gave me the opportunity to take the lead on this. But they're right. I didn't, I may have said, "Okay, back on track, back on track. We've only got so much time." But they kept me headed, it was always about them. It was always about them. We wanted it to be the Frenchtown residents' plan, and I really believe that it is.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. There is a motion and a second, Commissioners. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Well done. Commissioners, now onto item 13.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce that item, I just want to say thanks to my friend Maisha Mitchell. I regret that I didn't acknowledge you. I didn't see you in my field of vision. Thank you for everything you do, and you're always there for us. Thank you for being here. Item 13.02 is a public safety update. Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, we've been updating you consistently with our progress as it relates to our crime stats, the movement on our public safety campus, all the many activities wrapped around community policing. Since your last update, the six-month UCR report has been submitted to the FDLE. It reflects a reduction in violent crime of 24% compared to the same period in 2017, and overall crime reduction rate of 10%, which is the second consecutive year of a significant drop in crime in our community. Chief DeLeo is here this evening to give an update on all of the matters involving public safety, so I ask him to go ahead and provide that update.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I know this is kind of the hectic month for you, and people are coming up here to, will be coming up here this evening and later on to ask you for things. I'm here to say thank you, and to show you what your faith and investment in the police department has garnered, and the results we've garnered over the last four years, when we put this plan into place to really implement community policing, not just agency-wide, but community-wise, and form those partnerships. As Mr. Goode said, we filed our report earlier this August for the six months of 2018. And obviously, the most important aspect of crime that we've been focused on, or especially the last three years or so, is violent crime. If you look back the last two years, violent crime in 2016, 2017 saw about a 25% overall reduction. And in the first six months of this year, we've seen another 24% reduction. So the staffing that you helped support for the violent crime response teams, the extra community policing officers, our bicycle officers, the technology investments, we're seeing the results of your support, of the financial investment in the police department, but also the really strong shift in philosophy as part of our strategic plan. Property crime is again down by about 7.5% the first six months. So the overall number for the first six months of years, an additional 10% reduction in crime, on top of about the 14% reduction we saw in 2017. So we're continuing to move in the direction that we want to move. If we continue on the pace that we are, and I'm very confident on what we're building on, the foundation that we've created, we have a really good shot, I probably shouldn't use that phrase, but a really good opportunity to be at a 20-year-low crime rate this year, by the end of this year. So the tremendous progress, so the faith that you've shown in the police department, the investments that you've made the last few years are really garnering the results that we felt that it would. So thank you for that. I think it's important to note, too, that we're solving more crimes than we have in previous years. We've seen a significant increase from 16% to over 21% in our clearance rate. That's our solvability of crimes. Other than the homicide that unfortunately occurred last night, we have solved every homicide that has occurred in 2018. We've solved, about half of our aggravated assaults have been solved, either cleared by arrest or exceptionally cleared. And the most significant part, when you really dig down into the numbers, is we've actually made less arrests this year in total. But where our arrests have gone up are with the more serious crimes. So we've made more arrests for serious criminals in the first six months of this year than we did last year, but our overall arrest total has decreased. So that means we're focusing on the right people. And that's an important aspect that we have to make sure we're doing. This isn't talking about someone where we're just arresting a lot of people for suspended driver's license. We're focusing on the most serious offenders, and that's where we've seen, we arrested 140 more people for serious offenses this year than we did last year for the first six months. So it's really important to note that we're focused on the right people in the right place. It's important to note, too, this is truly a team effort, certainly from your commission, the support from the city manager's office, but also the other departments, the work that we do with Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Affairs this summer, all year round, the city attorney's office, Jonathan Patrick Screw with the Technology Innovation, Karen Gemmerville on code enforcement, and also our law enforcement partners, the sheriff's office, the university police departments, Capitol Police, all of us coming together has really made a tremendous difference, and not just have an impact in one little small area for a short period of time, but as you've seen over the last two, three years, we're sustaining that success, and the decreases have continued, and we've built upon that. So this is the plan so far. We're wrapping up year three of our strategic plan, so that means next year, when 2019 kicks in, we'll start planning for the next extension of the strategic plan, which would wrap up in 2020. So that's the crime stats portion of the report. I do want to recognize, too, and how proud I am of the department. It was a very strong message when I got here that community policing was the philosophy that all of us wanted to embrace, that we wanted to do. And in October, in just about three weeks, the Tallahassee Police Department is gonna be recognized by the International Association of Chiefs of Police with its Leadership in Community Policing Award. The ICP's got over 30,000 members, and it represents 150 countries. It represents about 20,000 agencies worldwide, and we're one of four agencies to receive this distinction in 2018 based on the work that we've made, the progress. It is peer-reviewed and selected, and we're being recognized for our collaboration, our comprehensive approach, how we share information, the community engagement, and ultimately, the results that we've shown over the last few years. So that's a significant accomplishment for the police department, the men and women, not just the officers, but our civilian support staff who does so much work behind the scenes. It's a reflection on what you have entrusted us with and invested in us to do, and then the support that we get from the other city departments. So that's just, it's a huge accomplishment to be able to do. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Finish.
Just touch on, again, that community engagement. You know, this last summer, we had six Operation Safe Neighborhood programs that some of you were able to join us out on. We had eight splash and jams that we partnered with Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Affairs. We had our Defy program for middle school youth, tax students for high school. We did three Youth Citizens Police Academies this summer, and of course, our traditional national night out in two different neighborhoods. So again, that, just because we've made in progress doesn't mean we stop. We know we have to continue to push forward and build on those successes. And then finally, just the update on the public safety campus. We are currently in the selection process for the architect. The review committee has met, made some initial recommendations. There'll be presentations in about a week and a half by the different groups that have submitted proposals. We are accepting proposals still for the construction manager at risk. That closes on the 20th. And then the plan is to be back before you towards the end of October with some action items for you to follow up on. Each of those review committees have members, not just from the police department, but from the city as a whole, and also community representation on them, as we recognize the importance of the, not, this is not gonna just be a new home for the police department, but how it's gonna have a role in our community and continuing on what we're building on. Thank you.
Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
Chief, I want to thank you for all your hard work, and the whole department, and Cynthia. These are much better, clearly, statistics than we heard just a few years ago, when there's been that steady decline. And these numbers seem to grow exponentially, and that's all good news. I do want to also acknowledge, because for whatever reason, I've been getting a lot of calls from media about our crime statistics. I want to thank the mayor for his leadership, because there were some of us, of which I was one, that's been here for almost, well, over nine years, that probably didn't pay as good attention to what we should have been doing, and the mayor's leadership enforcing that is extremely beneficial. So thank you for pushing us in that direction, because hiring more police officers, not only for doing typical law enforcement work, but community policing, and getting out in our community and doing the kinds of things that lower those crime statistics, and having the force that you now have so you can help solve some of those crimes, is the reason why we're where we are. So thank you. Congratulations to you, Cynthia, and also to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to commend the chief, and all of those that have taken a leadership role, Assistant City Manager Barber, and all of the partners in our law enforcement collective. Because as you said, chief, we couldn't do it alone. It's taken all of us working together. The sheriff, the police departments at each of the universities, and the college, the state attorney, all of those that have been involved in this process. You know, the one thing that I would say, even through all of this, and I'm not diminishing or de-minimizing crime at all, but this city has never been the Wild, Wild West that it's been characterized as being, unfortunately, by some of our own local media. And so I hope that they would now partner with us, along with our business community, to spread the word about what we're doing in Tallahassee, because it has an impact on our ability to recruit businesses to our community. When parents, you know, look at that information, unfortunately, again, in our own local media, they make decisions based on, decisions about where they're gonna send their child to college, based on what they read, not having lived here or witnessed it firsthand. And so we all have got to be partners in this as we move forward, like we've partnered with our neighborhood associations. But all of us have to be a part of this in continuing to make those numbers go down, but having people understand this is not the Wild, Wild West, and that, you know, we understand we have pockets of crime, and there are certain crimes that lead that list. But I'm certainly proud of where we've been the last three or four years that I've been on the commission, the resources that we've committed to the department, the Community Policing Initiative. Chief, that you've spearheaded, I think that's made all the difference in the world, is establishing those relationships, particularly in those areas where it was most needed, where there was maybe some distrust based on what, again, people read and hear on television. And so I think that's contributed immensely to where we have gotten thus far. That's not to say that we don't still have some work to do, because our number-one priority is to make sure that our residents and visitors to this great city of ours are kept safe and secure wherever they live. But I'm proud to be a part of this city, and the efforts that we've done to make sure that we accomplish that goal. So thank you all for what you do in that respect. And then I had two questions. One is, I'm not quite sure of if any of it is related, or what the genesis of, but the recent shootings in the western part of the city, chief can...
They are unrelated, sir. I can tell you, we're wrapping up the investigation. One will turn out to be a false report. It was a self-inflicted injury, which is unfortunate. Certainly, that individual has some other challenges that we will help them with to the best of our ability. We're making some good progress on our incident from last night, and have some good idea about some of the motivation behind it. And our investigators have certainly been out, you know, since last night and haven't stopped. So, but no, there's no indication that any of these incidents are related at all.
Right. And are there, do you feel like we need to make any additional efforts in that particular area, increase patrols?
We have been. Actually, we have a pretty good working relationship with the apartment complexes along Thorpe Street, Ocala. Certainly, you know, we know that in the past, we've had some of the pool party issues and things like there. So a couple of our lieutenants and watch commanders have very good relationships with the management. That's one of our spots that our violent crime response team regularly does proactive work in, based on some of the past shootings that we've had there, and some of the past incidents. They were actually on their way to the commons last night when it occurred, because they just finished the area they were in. That was next on their list of areas to go do, and unfortunately, they were headed that way after, as the shooting occurred, and didn't get there beforehand. So that has been a focus area for us.
Okay. And then my last question, Mayor, is, I know that in the past, we've talked about many of the property crimes being attributed to crimes of opportunity, particularly among students, where they leave their apartment or home doors unlocked, cars unlocked. You know, unfortunately, my wife and I did the same thing, and we were victimized twice. So are we working with the police departments at the universities and the colleges to educate our college students about these issues?
Both universities and the college, all three of them have education programs for their new students when they come in. We also partner with the, the majority of the students don't live on campus. So based on the enrollment, you know, they have a small footprint, and then, you know, we pick up the rest, and those students are ours. And so what we do is, we put out, we do the same thing we do in our neighborhoods, where we have association meetings, or we'll do safety meetings in the apartment complexes. We'll put out safety tips. We certainly do, those of you who follow us on Facebook and Twitter, you know, we do that nine o'clock routine about lock your door, lock your door, lock your door. And every once in a while, I'll actually have people call me and complain, "Why do you have to keep doing that?" Well, until everybody locks their doors, every morning when I get up and I check my emails, and I see how many burglaries we had to a vehicle or to an apartment because someone left their door unlocked, and you hate to blame the victim. I don't mean, but there's a shared responsibility. And we need people's help. And I said, "Until I can go like a whole week where there's no unlocked vehicles," I said, "Then we'll stop it." But until then, we're gonna keep pushing out there and reminding people, and just, you know, hammering that message.
I can tell you, after it happened to my wife, and then about a week later, I did the same thing, and it happened to me. I was almost ashamed to call.
But you did.
But I did. And so that's how mine got reported.
Chief, I want to add my voice of commendation to you. We've had our tense moments over the years on this topic, and you have just leaned in, all the more. Deputy Chief Forsyth, ACM Barber, who has really taken the reins over the collaborative effort to bring all the agencies together, tremendous to-your-line officers, investigators, teams that you all have assembled underneath, a huge, huge, huge word of appreciation for them, because while the rest of us are on the phone calling and reporting, your folks are the ones that are rushing in to make sure that we keep this, you know, community safe. And what y'all have accomplished, now setting us on a trajectory for a near 20-year-low, is not by accident. And I also want to give credit to the city manager, and the leadership that he has provided, and his predecessors before, because this has been a multi-year effort toward getting this thing under control, and the plans that you all have developed and begun to execute are exceptional. And to this commission, we didn't take our foot off the gas either. Not just the funding of the positions, which we have to thank the community for stepping up, not creating a lot of resistance when we ask for more resources in order to do that work. But at the same time, this commission added more resources. We went north of a million dollars in continuing funding in the human services sector.
Yes.
Because, as the chief said, and the manager, and ACM Barber, all acknowledged that this was not going to be a one-size-fits-all solution. This was never going to be about arresting our way out of it. And to hear you say, we've accomplished those numbers with fewer arrests, makes the point. Community connections, other diversionary programs, nonviolent communication, mentors, and adding more mentors, the moving around and helping the neighborhood take greater ownership, obviously, Operation Safe Neighbors, summer jobs for youth, opportunity zone, I mean, you name it. If you had to write a book...
I, I got to applaud Dr. Thomas' tempo.
Absolutely. And Dr. Thomas, absolutely. And he's, he's gotten a good deal of recognition for that, but it's important to lift that up again.
Collectively.
And then the, the way in which the community has really responded is, all has worked together to create the outcomes that we see. And we got to keep our feet on, on the pedal, you know, on the gas going forward. But I really appreciate the totality of, of your department, really thinking about this, not just as a arrest more people and throw away the key, but how do we disrupt, look at this from a supports frame and not a punitive frame, make sure that we're removing what are the most significant threats to the community, and then everyone else trying to divert. And I think the best way you can keep crime under control is to reduce the level of recidivism.
Yes.
If we can get control of a repeat offenders, and making sure that you're getting those who are perpetual offenders, and providing some sort of unnecessary work there, I mean, y'all have a recipe there. And so, the accommodation that you're going to get from the international chiefs is well deserved, and I think it's one that hopefully is a sentiment that's shared across departments, that not one entity, not one person, not one idea, not one pressure point got us to this place, but a lot of really great leadership by many of you all at the city department level and the respective agencies we work with, and a community that demanded more. And they put their money where their mouth is and gave more in order to get more.
And that makes all the difference.
It makes a huge difference. And so, let's stay in partnership, extremely proud of you and proud of your department and proud of the city and county and the respective agencies for the way they've leaned in.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, I just have a quick comment, and that is, yet again, I'm commending you for all of, you, you've got 40, 40 events here listed over the last couple of months that you've participated in. I'm incredibly impressed with the buy-in from you and the other officers, and I want to give a shout out to Ms. Barber, too, because she is right there with you. I mean, you all are in the community with people, and I think that's making all the difference. You are the one who's taught us that you can't police your way out of problems, and that by the time you get there, the crime's already been committed, and we've got to feed, that's not crime prevention.
No.
Crime prevention comes before that. So, I appreciate all the, this is, over the years, major changes. So, thank you very much.
Here, here. Commissioners, is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept this outstanding report. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Commissioners, I will take it. Thank you, Chief.
Could we move approval of 1303?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item 13.03, staff recommendation. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I those opposed, no. Motion passes. And commissioners, we're going to go right into public hearings. We've, we have, the time has gone a little bit over.
Yep.
So, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, we need to adjourn as the city commission convene as the CRA, take public comments on the CRA's budget hearing, and then come back as a city commission. So, if you can do that, sir.
Is there required a motion?
Okay, we will adjourn and reconvene as the CRA. We do have a CRA public meeting. Are there any, Ms. Manning, should you...
Okay, we're going to give you just a brief overview of the CRA budget. We can go into as much detail as you need to, we're going to, okay, they've got the PowerPoint up. Rick McCraw is our budget person, and he will be giving you the presentation. You're ready.
We do not have any public speakers on this item, so I think staff can go ahead with the presentation, and Mayor, if I get another form, I'll let you know. Thank you.
So, commissioners, I'm going to give you a brief overview. You've already seen this a couple of times. We had a discussion about it briefly with a little bit of the CRA board meeting earlier this afternoon. I can go into more detail, item by item if you want to, line item by line item if you want to, but right now, we'll look at the preview overview, and you can tell me if you want more detail. Again, some of the big changes that occurred since, since the last time you saw this in July, we talked about the $600,000 bridge loan from the city of Tallahassee that'll be used to help us pay for our share, 50% of the parking, public parking garage. We're going to use a combination of the, the bridge loan from the city, $600,000, and $815,000 and some change from our reserve account. In the past, we've been showing income coming from the sale of the O'Connell property back when we did that. The O'Connell property, when we bought that from, from, from the state, well, so, when we sold the O'Connell property to the state and purchased the Firestone blocks and property, included $960,000 cash payment. $400,000 that was put in an escrow account that was, could be used by FSU and the state to clean up the O'Connell property. We had anticipated getting that money back over a five-year period, but it looks like right now that the FSU has identified about $600,000 in remediation costs, and right now that we've, we have a payment processing for them for $235,000. So, I don't think we're going to see any of that $400,000 that's being held in escrow. We did add some funds, you know, to the, to the budget from the last, from the last time we met in July. We added $304,000 in, in project closing that we were able to put into the Frenchtown South Side District, and $413,000 into the downtown district. We'll talk a little bit about the downtown district, but more detail, but that gets it to $1.25 million in prior year funds. All that money is going into some of our capital projects. We will have, and we'll show you on the agenda item, we will have $75,000 for large and small events, but beyond that, we're only, we're only making funds in the downtown district to our legal obligations, our contracts and the like. From your action earlier today, $75,000 has been added to the downtown district for funding of small, large and small events. Staff will prepare program guidelines and criteria for consideration by the board to, at a later date. This reduces the anticipated downtown uncommitted funds from $126,000 to just shy of $52,000. This change will be reflected in the, in the final and approved resolution number 18-R-49, but it's not reflected in the documents you have in your agenda items right now, just because we've no chance to adjust what you have in your agenda items right now, but it will be reflected in the final resolution. So, just in general overview, what we're looking at is $9.8 million in revenue sources for the doubt, for the Frenchtown South Side District. That includes $2.2, $2.3 million in anticipated tax increment funds. The rest of that money comes from, such as revenue from the parking garages, the other, other uses we have, special, special event parking, and $4.2 million from the anticipated closing of the sale of the O'Connell and Firestone, excuse me, the Firestone and Blocks and properties, which could occur, we anticipate occurring by the end of September, but it might be even early October. But right now, we have it in the fiscal, for this budget here, and that's held in our reserves at $4.28 million. You'll see the reserves is $4.6 million. That includes money we already had in reserves, plus the $4.28 million. We have expenses of $2.7 million. That includes expenses for the, for the fire, for the block and deck that we have to pay them, their grant payment for this year. It includes revenue, expenses we have for parking, expenses and, and the related. And then we have capital expenses of $1.5 million, which includes a million dollars for affordable housing, $300,000 for our business facility improvement grant, and $7,500 for property management, keeping the grass mowed and the fences in good shape. And $150,000 for the neighborhood gateway project. In Devin, Devin's presentation, he talked about $350,000. Devin and I have had a conversation about this, and there will be money, we'll be adding to it during the course of the year, but we wanted to start off with, with $150,000 as the initial kickoff, and that's because Devin felt that was a good number, they'd get started on with some of the implementation efforts. But certainly, as you'll see, we have uncommitted funds of $599,000, so during the course of the year, if more money needs to be added, we can, plus with the $4.2 million we received for the sale of the Firestone and Blocks and property, there'll be additional funds we can add during the course of the year, or maybe the course of several years. For the downtown district, we are looking at revenues of 5.2 million. That includes about $2.1 million in tax increment revenue, and then we have, we do get good parking revenue in there from the aloft parking lot. We're also going to take $815,000, as we discussed earlier, of our current reserve funds, and put that into the revenue, revenue stream, so we can use that for our public parking garage, as well as $600,000 bridge loan from the city, from the city of Tallahassee. Our expenses are $4.3 million. Of that 4.3, 3.5 approximately will be used for the parking garage. The other ones are revenue, of operating expenses, and then 75,000, the only thing we have in uncommitted funds, 75,000 will go towards the large and small events in the downtown district. We also have a few minor payments to make for College Town and to some of the other downtown projects. College Town, this will be their last year of, of payments, and then Gateway and a few other small projects. With that, we'll have $51,000 uncommitted, which gives us a balance of zero. It's where we always want to be with our balances, having all of our funds committed or at least identified for one form or the other. So, the action, and again, I can go into more detail if you want to look at the, the line by line breakdown, but our action to you today is to adopt resolution 18-R-49, which will reflect the $75,000 you added as a CRA board member, and that would also, also as part of that action, authorize the CRA chair, the city manager, and the CRA executive director to implement the funding of the budget.
Move option one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do we need a public hearing, or public testimony? There are no speakers?
We, we have speakers on the city budget, but none on the CRA budget.
Got it, okay. Commissioners, there is, Commissioner Miller.
I wanted to bring up something, you know, we had talked about affordable housing earlier today, and when I had my briefing, I brought up again the fact that I really want to see some of that used in a little bit more innovative way than we've used in the past. I would like to see some, I would like to see a residential facade grant made available to people, and basically, income-based. I think that one of the concerns before was that it was accessible by everyone, so you can either choose to have it accessible by everyone, and the CRA can administer it, or you can choose to, this is my understanding from what you told me, that it can be income-based, and if that's the case, it'll be managed by Michael Parker, because he has staff who specifically do, do assess people for income requirements. But I very definitely would like to see a program like that developed at, within this year's budget, within this budget. The other thing I wanted to mention is that a lot of people are concerned about demolition, and I think that it needs to be, people need to know that demolition is a very, very slow, methodical, and, and that's the, the option of last resort, essentially, that we don't really want to demolish a building that can be saved. I mean, I think I've got a proven track record, there are a couple of them that I've personally advocated for saving here in the last eight years, but I think that, that that needs to be made, people need to understand and not feel quite so concerned about that. And, and honestly, the demolition requests were coming from the communities when we were talking about South City several years ago. They were asking for the city to come in and demolish the properties. So, that said, I'd like for you to put effort into trying to do what you can to, to make sure our incoming commissioners and others in the community understand, you know, that that is the option of last resort. And finally, I'd like to ask you to consider somehow doing an architectural recycling-type program where you can take the features out of, or certain features, certain usable items, certain aspects of the homes that are being demolished that are specific to the design and type of architecture that's found in Frenchtown and possibly reuse them. If that, if you could do that, I think we could really have the actual, you know, parts of the actual building incorporated into new buildings and so on. And I know that's problematic that there, who's going to do it, where we're going to store it, on and on, but whatever you can do to try to work with the community members to figure out ways that that could possibly be accomplished, I think that would be a real step in the right direction, and it would validate to people that we, that, that there is a huge community support for trying to save the homes that are historic.
And all those items, we're currently having conversations with growth management on, and as Devin noted, some of the affordable housing, some of the housing initiative efforts are identified in his plan. We're working with, with a neighborhood-first effort on the South Side, the Greater Barn community. They're going to do a presentation tomorrow night at part of their public hearing to identify similar concepts that Devin presented. So, I think the answer to your, well, I know the answer to your question is, all those are being worked, and, you know, we do have a variety of funds that'll become available to us this year.
Right.
At least another $4.2 million will have ways to commit that, I think, consistent things, your thing, and we've heard the same thing from the other board members.
Well, if we could have even painting facade grants to help people the way we do for commercial, I mean, it's so easy, you know, and two or three, four, $10,000 sometimes can be the difference between whether people can paint or not. And I just think it's very, very important to make programs like that available to residents. Thank you.
Sir.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, Commissioner Miller, you would be okay with this, too? You know, I, I'm serving now, I guess unofficially, as the commission's representative on the TLC board, and I know that we're doing some aggressive rehab around the city, and I could see we're a partnership there in terms of the facade grants. Would be an excellent opportunity for us to expand the partnership that we already have.
Into housing.
With TLC, yes. Into housing. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
What do we do now?
Commissioners, good, appreciate, all right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be...
Do we have to read anything into the record, or...
You don't have to read anything of record, but you want to reflect that it includes that $75,000 adjustment that's not in the current resolution.
Include that in my motion.
Great. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are we back to regular order on the city commission?
Yes, sir. If you'll adjourn as the CRA board and reconvene as the city commission.
Great. We are adjourned as a CRA. We'll reconvene the meeting now as the city commission, and we're in the public hearing section of the city commission. I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, before we take public comment, Robert Wigan, our budget director, has a brief presentation to outline this year's work, and as you know, tonight's discussion is the penultimate step in the budget process. You've heard, had many meetings to discuss the budget and provide guidance and priorities. Tonight's budget, it's an operating budget of $727 million. It's balanced, there's $161 million capital budget, all of which reflect your priorities of public safety, investment, infrastructure, economic development, and quality of life. Again, Robert's going to give us a presentation. At the conclusion of the presentation, there are a number of actions you need to take, and the city attorney is going to guide us through those.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, commissioners, and appointed officials, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. Tonight, we will take additional public comment, as the city manager mentioned, on the fiscal year 19 budget, balanced budget, as the first of two required steps to adopt a millage rate and a budget for the city of Tallahassee and for the downtown improvement authority. The budget and the millage proposals from the city to date affirm that there is no increase to the 4.1 millage rate for the city, nor an increase to the 1 mil, the downtown improvement authority adopted millage rate. Both millage rates were certified by the property praiser prior to August 4th, as required by the state's truth and millage process. Taxpayers were notified by mail, and with any questions that they had, contacting our office for us to answer. Florida statute requires us to accomplish certain goals today, identified in the list of bullets on your, on the chart in front of you, and the list of bullets with the dates on the right. The city has held additionally monthly meetings to ensure public involvement, public discussion, and to make adjustments based on the latest progress of the fiscal year 18. and to make adjustments based on the latest progress of the fiscal year eighteen budget, and information that we've gathered from strategic plans and reports from the various departments in their, on their progress towards your priorities. As I mentioned, that today is the first of two required public hearings to affirm the millage rates and the fiscal year nineteen proposed budget. We've, we've arrived at this point with, after a series of discussions and updates, today's meeting marks the seventh public meeting on the budget. The total cost of services to Tallahassee residents is the second lowest among twelve comparable Florida cities, as shown in the municipal cost comparison. That's critical, because we, we want to apply the millage rate to the proper efforts, public safety, economic development, infrastructure investment, and of course, quality of life. Interestingly enough, we, we compare ourselves and benchmark against twelve other communities, eleven other communities. We were also looking at populations that were greater than a hundred thousand, and we are among the, we are the lowest millage rate among those other thirty-eight municipalities. And there's, there's thirty-eight, thirty-eight cities in that, in that list that we looked at. As I mentioned, the priorities are maintained. We've discussed that fiscal year eighteen budget process, developed the fiscal year nineteen budget. As a result of that feedback, are confident in moving forward. As we've moved forward through that process, there are certain assumptions that we've made. I mentioned the four point one mil cap that you adopted on June sixth, two thousand eighteen, so that we could advertise that rate. The, the general fund budget for fiscal year nineteen is a hundred and fifty-eight point eight million dollars, with the total fiscal year nineteen city operating budget, seven hundred and twenty-seven point three million dollars. Since we last talked in July, there have been a number of updates. They're listed there. We've increased the pass-through amount for the CRA district based on their updated tax financing increments, and you've seen that reported in the, the budget that you just adopted for the CRA. We've added a full implementation of the COPS grant. That's just a procedural step to make sure that we've matched the revenue that we're going to draw down from the Department of Justice to the hiring process that we are going through this year to fill those COPS grant positions. And then we've revised the projection for half-cent sales tax that added ninety-three thousand dollars. Usually, there's more exciting information at this time about additional revenues. We find that what we've done very well is, is by giving frequent updates, is report on what those actual revenues are, so that we have them identified early in the process, and, and know then how to apply them for our budget balancing. And then, as part of the fourteen operating budgets, we've recognized the implementation of the police and the fire collective burning units with, with all positions updated as of June, so that they're reflected with their correct salaries. The, the pro forma that you see to your right, on the, on the screen there is a balanced budget pro forma. It, it looks at the five-year process, where we've recognized the two point eight million dollars in ad valorem property tax growth that can be attributed to economic development and new properties that have been added to the tax roll, and then that assists us to maintain our staffing for police, streets, sidewalks, parks and recreation, and human services. As another set of assumptions we've worked with in developing the budget, is, we've looked at fiscal year nineteen staffing levels, and we've committed to work within those two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one positions that we've identified as for our fourteen operating funds. You'll notice to the right, some graphs that depict where we have been as, as, in our history of FTEs, we manage to maintain positions at a level that's either at or below what population increase, while at the same time, as we've gone through reorganizations or efficiencies, applied those, those additional positions towards the most important priorities, public safety being the first of those. And that's reflected in this public safety staffing that's increased by fifty-four positions the past four years. You'll also notice that as we've gone through our annual budget quarterly updates, we've talked about departments that require additional needs. The Building Inspection Department had a phenomenal amount of growth, phenomenal amount of work, and we were able to identify two positions within the two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one positions to, to respond to that need, and then we, we've done the same thing in tempo by adding a position within that, within that cap. Tonight, we're going to ask you to approve and adopt a, the fiscal year nineteen operating budget, but also at the same time, take public comment and adopt the fiscal year nineteen capital budget. That capital budget is a hundred and sixty-one point eight million dollars, maintaining sound investment in infrastructure. It has not changed since we talked in July, but I wanted to reiterate what categories we were looking at as, as ideal and as important. Public infrastructure, new technology, our, our supporting our airport, and then our six utilities. We've got a depiction on the right-hand side of all of the departments and their capital budget requests, and then detailed project lists are in the attachment in the, in the budget item. Another aspect that is, is final, is being finalized as, for this meeting, we, we are on a five-year schedule to revisit utility rates. We are on the schedule for fiscal year eighteen to go through the process of, of doing a rate study for electric and gas, our energy system. Those results are, are in. The studies were conducted by Leidos Engineering Incorporated, and they followed a methodology that was consistent with identifying revenue requirements, that took into consideration, residential and commercial rate equity, looked at sales and customer forecasts, looked at operational plans, strategic plans, maintenance schedules, and financing of improvements that you've approved this past year to, to set what those rates would be. That process they went through in fiscal year eighteen, using the fiscal year eighteen budget, addresses rates for the four-year period, fiscal year nineteen through twenty-two, and then as part of this process, they also looked at fees that are charged to specific entities, and that, that, that is reflected in the electric rate study. The utility advisory committee was updated as we went through that process, to ensure that we're getting positive feedback and good feedback and recommendations from our advisory committees, and then the study results recommend continuing CPI for annual rate adjustments. The results of the studies, with your, with your approval tonight, Leidos recommends residential bill reduction of three point three percent on average, based on city's modernization of its fleet, improved efficiencies as a result of that modernization, and then lower fuel costs. You, you'll recall that in prior agenda items this year, we voted on a hundred and twenty million dollars in additional debt. That is increase the base rates for the utility, the electric utility. At the same time, while that modernizes the fleet, creates efficiencies, fuel costs per kilowatt hours are less, and that's, that results then in that three point three percent reduction in our rates, in our bills. Great news for our small businesses. It continues to be consistently the lowest bill in the state at a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's significant, because almost eighty percent of our customers in our commercial sector are our small businesses, and economic development is, is again, very important as a priority for the commission. That, I mentioned that we've standardized and are requesting some updates to charges for recurring or routine requests. There is a published rate that we provide for specialized services that's not being provided to all, all customers, that the electric utility then uses as developers or requests for special installations or, or accommodations above what they would normally typically introduce or, or build as infrastructure for the electric utility. That, that rate, those rates are set in, in the ordinance. And then we've, you, you, of course, you know that we introduced the ordinance earlier today for your approval on nine twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. Leidos also recommends a residential bill reduction of ten point two percent, which is a lower bill on average. The lower bills are based, are based on sound management, in the case of gas, planned system expansion, and then strong customer growth in the use of vehicle fuels. Significant to know that since we did, last did a rate study, the natural gas refueling with no Petru contract is now our fifth-largest user, and probably accounts again for our ability to be able to pass on reduced bills for, for most of our customers in a solid business, to business as part of the model. We introduced that ordinance also earlier today for your approval, in, in the earlier part of the agenda. With that background, to give you some updates on where we have been over the last nine months, where we spoke to you last in July, the next steps include the city attorney reading into the record the required steps in language to adopt a tentative millage rate, a budget for the city in the DIA, and then open the public hearing, accept your comments and votes. We'll also ask you to take action on resolutions for the millage rate for the budget, and before that happens, if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be pleased to.
Commissioner Miller?
I would, I, I see that you're having us vote to approve the budget. Is that my understanding?
Miller, tentative.
No. We're approving the tentative millage and the tentative budget later, but.
We'll open up.
We'll approve the budget at the end of the month, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, nine, nine twelve is our first public hearing, nine twenty-six will be our second public hearing, and then we'll, that'll be the formal appropriation, adoption of the.
Didn't we vote on the millage rate in July?
Yes, and, and we advertised that as part of the, the truth and millage process. That needs to be affirmed in resolution as part of the process tonight, and on the twenty-sixth.
We haven't touched our mind.
I, I think we were sending an early signal that we were committing to the four point one mil, so that as requests came in there, we, we were firm in how we were funding our general fund.
Commissioners, is there a motion?
Not yet.
Oh, you, you've got to go through a couple of steps.
Yes. If you will bear with me.
Please, yes.
There are several steps that we have to go through tonight pursuant to Truth and and Millage Act. The Truth and Millage Act requires certain steps in a certain order, and that certain things must be read into the record. These steps are in the agenda item, if you want to follow there, but the first item is to read into the record the following. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year two thousand nineteen is four point one zero 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 mils for the city of Tallahassee, and one, one point zero 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 mil for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of three point, three point nine three five five by four point six nine percent. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of four point one mils. Resolution number eighteen dash R dash forty-six, which is provided to state the percentage that the tentative millage rate is more than the rollback rate, is in Attachment One. The next two steps are to allow public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget. If people have turned into speaker slips, they may speak on either the proposed millage or the proposed budget for the city at this time. In compliance with Florida Statute, Section two hundred point zero six five, the date of this hearing was included in the trim notice, which was mailed to all property owners by the Leon County Property Appraiser. At this time, we call for public speakers on the city's proposed millage.
Mayor, we do have just two speakers at this time. The first is Janelle King, followed by Jeremiah Murphy. As Ms. King comes forward. Sure, yes. So we'll have Jeremiah Murphy first, but as with our earlier portion of our meeting, speakers will have three minutes for your remarks. There's a timer right there in front of you, and if you'll give your name and address for the record, I'll start that, and you may begin.
All right, my name is Jeremiah Murphy. Address is twenty forty Laurel Street, Tallahassee. All right, so let me first say that I feel humbled, inspired, and hopeful. And, let me get this going, all right. And let me just introduce myself again more formally. I'm Jeremiah Murphy, astrophysicist by day and dancer by night, but today, I'm here as a volunteer at the Restorative Justice Program called Community Connections. And I'm, specifically, I'm here to ask that we embrace hope, shoot for the stars, and invest a little more in community connections. Now, naturally, one of the primary objectives of this city is to improve public safety, because safety is a primary need that we all have. And one of the ways we want to do this is by reducing crime, and I thank you, the chief, for giving us that great summary on what, what efforts they're doing. And, but what I'd also like to share is that in this town, we have one of the most innovative and effective restorative justice programs that I have seen across this nation. It's led by Cindy Bigby, who's the director, and Dan Kahn and Julia Denholm de Maria, who are the staff members. These people are amazing people, and I encourage you to take note of their names. They're doing something amazing in this town. And before I tell you how effective it is, let me first describe what they do. So Community Connections serves youth from thirteen to seventeen. The students generally get in trouble, and they're referred to the program as a diversion program by the community, by schools, and by the criminal justice system. There are about fifteen of these students that come through each cycle, and there are four cycles per year. In addition, there are fifteen volunteers like me, just people who have heard about nonviolent communication and this program, and want to help. And what we do is, we just sit there with the students, and we learn along with them ways to connect, have empathy, and to do this process, nonviolent communication. There are ages from twelve to seventy-eight. It's a place where a professor like me is humbled on a daily basis by the wisdom of a Walmart clerk. We all learn effective communication and conflict resolution through a process called nonviolent communication. In short, we learn how to have connection, how to come back to connection when there is a disconnection, and also in short, we learn how to be present, be in the moment, how to have empathy, and then how to connect. Now, let me summarize how effective this program is. For one, the program just flat-out works. The numbers speak for themselves. More than ninety percent of the kids that come through this program don't go to prison. And that is one of the most effective restorative justice programs I have seen, and I have volunteered a lot of restorative justice programs across this nation, in Seattle, Tucson, New York City, and Princeton. These kids, let me tell you, they are engaged. If you see them, you will be inspired. I encourage you to come down to graduation, or come down and volunteer. It's, it's truly amazing. As you would expect, when they begin the program, these kids are closed off, and I'm out of time. So let me just say, let's see, thirty percent? Am I out of time, or can I go on?
You are out of time, so if you.
Okay, all right, let me, let me just get to the punchline. The punchline is that I want to encourage you to embrace the challenge to scale up this program, so my ask today is simple, that we give this program a modest increase by providing the staff adjustable wage, and let me leave you with this one quote, "We all are in the gutter. Some of us are looking at the stars." The staff, volunteers, and kids are reaching for the stars at this program. So let's invest in their effective program, let's invest in their hope, and let's help each other reach for the stars.
Thank you so much. Next speaker is Janelle King.
Mayor, could I?
Please.
You know, we had quite a lot of information coming forward on Palmer Monroe and the Restorative Justice Program in the past, but we haven't really heard much about it in the last several years, so maybe we could agenda an item.
That'd be great.
Give us update, and you can come back and tell us more.
Maybe we can include that in the.
I don't mean tonight, I mean.
September.
Let me, let me, let me just say that.
We, we, we won't be able to this evening, but what we could do, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
If we could on the final September meeting.
Yes, sir, we will.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name's Janelle King, and I work as the Restorative Practices Specialist at Florida Department of Children and Families. So what I do is, I train staff that work in group and foster homes across the state on restorative practices, restorative justice, and nonviolent communication. I've been a volunteer in the Community Connections Program for four years, and I'm proud to be a part of this program. I'm here to implore you to invest more resources in this program to meet the needs for stability and for support for the program and for the staff. I'd like you to imagine a city, and a nation, and a world at large, where people aren't fighting, where harmony is all around us, where kids aren't getting suspended, and people aren't shooting each other. Imagine what that world would be like. And we actually see this level of connection and safety every day with what's happening in the Community Connections Program here in our city of Tallahassee. In my criminology grad program, and during the time that I worked at Department of Juvenile Justice, there was a lot of talk, and here tonight as well, there's a lot of talk about what works, and what programs do we want to invest in, and what programs are basically going to give us the largest bang for our buck. What programs are going to reduce recidivism rates? We heard that tonight. And I know from firsthand experience and seeing the data from the Community Connections Program that this cutting-edge restorative justice program works, and is what our city and our world needs, to thwart crime and violence. Part of the grand. Part of the grand vision, of course, is to expand nonviolent communication and this work into schools, but we need to ensure that the staff here locally have enhanced resource stability with their jobs. It's working in the job that I do in group homes and foster homes across the state. The cultures are changing. Police are being called out less to group homes and foster homes because of these skills that staff are, are acquiring through the trainings and ongoing support, so I know that it's working, and it can work in schools as well. And it needs to be replicated in schools. So in summation, safety is built through trust, and trust is built through the same nonviolent communication processes taught here locally in the Community Connections Program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mayor, I don't have any other speakers on the budget or item seventeen oh one.
Great. I just want to first thank the, the speakers who came forward, and thank you for all of the work that you do in this space and your volunteerism. This commission has a very special relationship with the Restorative Justice Program and also with Palmer Monroe. We funded the reopening of that center when it closed. We also funded the restorative justice work that is taking place there now and have had a consistent commitment to it over our time here. And I would love to see what the actual formal request is from, from staff. I know this goes to the Parks and Recreation, but the commission has demonstrated before a very specific interest in the success of that program, and so if we could see that as a part of the budget, what was requested and, and not granted, it'd be helpful to see. City Attorney.
So do we have any other speakers on the city's proposed budget?
We do not.
That concludes the public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget, seeing that there are no other speakers. The next two steps, steps four and five, are to allow public input on the downtown improvement authority's proposed millage of one mil and the downtown improvement authority's proposed budget. In compliance with Florida Statutes, section two hundred point zero six five, the date of this hearing was also included in the trim notice, which was mailed to all property owners by the county property appraiser. If we could now have speakers on the downtown improvement authority's proposed millage and the proposed budget for the downtown improvement authority.
We have no speakers on those items.
The next step, then, is to approve any adjustment to the city's proposed budget, as you've heard earlier from Mr. Wigan. Prior to this, the commissioners may discuss the proposed millage rate and proposed budget. The public hearing process is completed for today, so at this time, there would be commission discussion, if any.
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioners, I think that, I hope you had a chance to look at the healthcare increases that we've been looking at, and over the past seven or eight years, this is just a repetitive pattern year after year after year. And even during that period of time, there have been years when the, the staff raises were zero to two percent essentially, and we're finally getting to the point where we can, can conceive of a three percent raise, but honestly, over time, I think we need a closer look at whether those raises are being basically washed away because of the increases in healthcare costs. So I know that our, our, we haven't put out an RFP since two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and somewhere around in there, and I would like for you all in the coming year, I don't think there's anything you can do about it at this point, but I'd like for you all to put your heads together and try to figure out exactly how to balance this out, because it's become, it's become quite burdensome to everyone. And, and, and I'm not saying this on my behalf because I'm getting ready to retire, but the fact is that the retirees are picking up the entire cost. There's not any cost sharing with the city. So to absorb a six and plus percentage every year is, is challenging for a lot of people who are on very limited incomes, who are seniors in our community. So I'd like to ask you to look into that and look into alternatives, look into imaginative ways. I also saw that there were three, three options for, that the Capital Health Plan had come back with two other alternative options, and the consensus of staff study was that it would be more expensive to go with that, but the fact is that it is up to the individual as to how many times they go to the doctor, and that is going to, or, or utilize health services, and that's going to dictate how much money it costs them. So to just say across the board, you know, it's going to be more expensive, we don't necessarily know that for a lot of people.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. We'll, we'll certainly look at that again next year. Healthcare costs continue to be one of our fastest rising expenses as an organization and as employees. And I appreciate your leadership and the leadership of the entire commission to make sure that the raises that employees are eligible for this year will, in fact, result in a net increase. But it's not lost on us that healthcare costs continue to rise faster than other costs. We'll look at that again next year. We've got a good partnership with CHP. They do a good job for us. One of the things we're working on very much is to make sure our workforce is healthy because that impacts the cost of healthcare. If we can encourage our workforce to, to take care of themselves, because all too often they are focused on things other than their well-being and health, if they can take care of themselves, we know that has a long-term impact on those costs, too. So we will definitely look at that in the next budget process.
I think that, that, that we have an excellent wellness program, and, I mean, they, they go out of their way to try to get people to participate, but I don't see CHP actually responding in kind when they, in giving us any credit for that. And my question was, is this app, is this, are these increases applied system-wide, or is that just an increase that's just for city employees?
In our case, we drive the pool that we're in. So our cost of healthcare and driving, I mean, we influence it so much in terms of our costs, so, so to the extent we can do better, we should benefit.
Just to clarify that, I think it is, the reason why we're driving, we're a community-rated system, so instead of the rates being based off the health and wellness of the city of Tallahassee employees alone, it's spread across.
Same line.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we're the drivers. We're at the top end on the city side for.
That's right.
The sicker within the pool.
Our employees are sicker than everybody else's?
I think I saw a stat that shows something like ninety percent of the costs is for about ten percent of our.
Yeah, I understand that, but is that citywide, or, I don't understand that our employees are.
What the mayor is referring to, and, and I've not looked at the numbers recently, so they're not fresh in my mind, though, is, is the city's contribution relative to other average pool in terms of costs, which would translate to healthcare cost. And it, at that time, I know it was greater than average, and I believe that's what the mayor is referring to. And so as you add that into the total cost pool, and that ultimately goes into the derivation of rates, it matters. And so the wellness and well-being of our employees impact that. That clearly is something that's hard to do and hard to change, but that is part of the equation, and so I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And, and I do agree, I think our wellness program is a very good program, and we encourage our employees to participate as much as they can and do so in, in, you know, in a very proactive way.
It's a concern.
Yes, ma'am.
I will have one other concern. I have, and I'm assuming that others of you have been visited by the folks from the Animal Services Center, and what they pointed out to me is that when we gave funding for another vet several years ago, we didn't fund any support systems. Now, what I thought I understood was that we were getting interns essentially, and I thought it was from FAMU, but we were getting interns that were helping to fill that vet tech position, but basically, we, at the same time, expanded the responsibilities of the vets and the vet techs, and so now you've got vets who are doing vet tech work just because they don't have the, they don't have a vet tech to support them, and then the average expectation is three vet techs for vet, and yet we are, we have two vet techs, period. And so I'm thinking that you should really look into that a little more because we want the most efficient use of our staff, and when we have, when we have vets that are performing vet tech tasks that, that could be done by someone else, you know, let's try to find some community volunteers that can fill in in some way. The universities would be, if, I don't know, we don't have a veterinary school here, so I don't know where those folks were coming from, but I would like to see if we can't cover this a little bit more efficiently, because this is inefficient, have these people wasting, essentially wasting their time doing work that others should be able to do. So please, whoever's in charge of the Animal Services Center, hear my voice. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Specifically on the animal services piece, it, it really does seem like every year there's a new set of requests. Don't we do like over multi-year, but, you know, outlook on what the budget and what the needs are and that kind of thing? It, it is beginning to feel a little bit outside of the process.
Let's just say.
Well, organized for sure, but I do think, I mean, I guess I'm asking because it is so regularized, I'm wondering how it is that we're looking in the out years around the staffing and the support and that kind of thing, or is it really the case that these needs are, are new every year, and that's why we're thinking about it?
I think the general response to that, Mr. Mayor, is we put together the budget, we're looking at our outcomes and what we hope to achieve. In the case of the animal shelter, one of your greatest metrics is your live release rate. So how well are you doing in that regard? And so we consider that when we put the budget together, we try to balance all the priorities of the commission. That's, that's an input into what we do. You, over the last three or four or five years, have added, I believe, three positions out there, could be more, Ashley could correct me, but you've added positions, and I think we've been very measured in, in the, the goal of increasing our live release rate, which has increased remarkably, actually. So I, you know, from a long-term visioning point of view, and when, when our Parks and Recreation Department, which manages that group, when they put together their budget, they understand the constraints of the city's budget, of course, and the priorities that go into that, and I think ultimately what we try to achieve is an outcome. So that's what we did this year, very consistent again this year, and I'm, I'm pleased to say that the live release rates are, are good, really good compared to what they were just a few years ago. And so that's the recommendation that's in the budget this year.
And there, there is a Animal Services Foundation. Is there a private foundation that is specifically for that, that raises resources?
Yes, sir.
There is. It's active, it's got money in it, or?
Very active.
And it's not underneath the jurisdiction of the city, it's separate and apart from, just, sorry, I'm just trying to understand how we get some private philanthropy.
Yes, sir, the Animal Services, Animal Shelter Foundation, rather, is a private five oh one C three nonprofit. It's one of the several partner groups that we work with consistently throughout our community. We're very blessed to have a number of nonprofit groups that help us in many different regards, including be the solution that the city provides funding for, as well as Petsad Lightem. We've got a number of rescue partner groups that work with us, so we're very fortunate in that regard to have a number of partner organizations.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, Ashley mentioned it, clearly the goal, I mentioned the live release rates, but that's when the animals, when we, we are the caretaker of the animals. Ideally, we don't get those animals, and you'll recall, you were asked to include some funding for be the solution, which is span neuter for, you know, the, the private citizens, and, and that's in the budget at your direction. So ideally, you reduce the amount of population that we're serving, that has an even greater impact, so that's part of, part of the, the equation as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions on, uh, budget?
Okay. Then we'll need a motion to approve the adjustments to the city's proposed budget as recommended in the agenda item or discussed by commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
There's a, a motion and a second to approve, uh, adjustments? Do we need a vote now?
Yes.
Great. It's a very scripted thing, I just want to make sure I'm following.
Yes, now we need a vote.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve the city's tentative millage rate of four point one mils as set forth in resolution number eighteen dash R dash forty-six and publicly announce that the proposed aggregate millage rate is more than the rollback rate of three point nine three five five by four point six nine percent.
Great, there's a motion on, uh.
So moved.
Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
And now we'll need a motion to approve the city's tentative budget as adjusted.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve the tentative budget. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Now we need a motion to approve the downtown improvement authority's tentative millage rate of one mil as stated in resolution number eighteen dash R dash forty-six.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Now we need a motion to approve the downtown improvement authority's tentative budget.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the downtown tentative budget. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
I will need a motion to approve the negotiated healthcare rates with Capital Health Plan for FY nineteen. This is simply required by our contract with CHP.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the healthcare rates. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
All right, three, one, motion passes.
To summarize, the city commission has tentatively approved the millage rate for both the city and the DIA and the expenditures and obligations of the city of Tallahassee and the DIA for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, designating the sources of revenue and appropriations. The titles to the resolution setting forth the city commission's approvals are as follows. Resolution number eighteen dash R dash forty-six, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, as four point one mils for the city of Tallahassee and one mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of three point nine three five five by four point six nine percent, and establishing an effective date thereof. And resolution number eighteen dash R dash four seven, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the downtown improvement authority for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand and nineteen, designating the sources of revenue and said appropriations, and providing an effective date. A public hearing on the final budget will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, at which time, resolution eighteen dash R dash forty-six setting the millage rate, and resolution number eighteen dash R dash forty-seven setting the budget will be approved. Continued upon commission action, the resolutions and required budget summary advertisement will be adjusted for all issues resolved as a part of this agenda item, as well as for other items approved during tonight's meeting that may affect fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. That concludes the script.
Right.
Very good.
All right, made it through that one. One more to go. Commissioners, we're now, I believe at the portion of the meeting where we'll take speakers on unengaged items. Are there any speakers?
Mayor, you have a couple of items that you have not covered yet. There is a, a second public hearing, item seventeen oh two on the.
Oh, the, the special assessment?
Special assessments.
Yeah. Got it. Are there speakers on that one, or is there?
There are no speakers on that item. You can make a motion.
Does that conclude the public hearing on that item?
Yes, that will conclude the public hearing because there are no public speakers, but you might want to discuss it or.
Move staff recommendations, Mayor.
There's a first, there's a motion and a second on staff recommendation, item seventeen oh two. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Thank you, motion passes. Thank you to the budget staff, all these diligent faces over to the right that know so much more about these numbers than we got to dig into today, but know that we thank you for your diligent work year-round, not just when it culminates at these meetings, so thank you for that. Our commissioners were now positioned to receive comment on unengaged items.
Let me ask one other question. Did we cover item thirteen oh three? I, I believe that was an item we stepped past.
We did.
We did cover that one, okay. As long as we got that one covered, then we do have unengaged speakers. Mayor, we have, Harry Brown will be the first speaker for this portion of the meeting. He'll be followed by Erwin Jackson.
I'm Harry Brown. This is my Bible. I'm here to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I reside at fifty-four thirty-one Crump Road, Tallahassee. I come before the commission to remind you, Gillum, that you and your run for the governorship for this state, you are to be reminded to treat us all equally. I recall coming before you on several different occasions, and you did not treat me with the same dignity and respect that you showed other speakers. On one occasion, I came. that you showed other speakers. On one occasion, I came after a speaker, Ms. Smith, that you allowed to speak nine and a half minutes. When I asked to be allowed an extra minute to speak, you denied my request in such a descendent and arrogant manner. Anita Favors interrupted me on one occasion, and I asked you to yield me back some of my time that she had taken, but you refused. Even you interrupted me while speaking to say that you did not want to hear what I had to say. You may not want to hear what I have to say, but I want you to know that I have a right to say it. Under your leadership, I have requested tapes of the commission meetings only to find that the tapes had been altered. One of the most horrendous things you did was to Lily Williams, who witnessed Scott Maddox at one of his shenanigans, and she was wrongfully fired. You promised Lily you would be going, you were going to be helping her get her job back, but she never heard from you. You lied on me regarding something I said regarding Anita and her son, while having the other commissioners follow your lead in calling me a liar. You allowed your courts to engage in name-calling from the desk, and you never made an effort to stop it until I hear an inkling of contrition from you. Please, remove my name from your email list. I have an email on my phone right now from you, and I get tired of having to delete your email. Have your campaign person remove my name.
Excuse me, you're at three minutes.
I cam, I campaigned for you relentlessly.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
To have you come to this commission, and you told me in no uncertain terms that you did not know me from Adam. You need to clean up your act.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. On the email thing, please unsubscribe at the bottom. I'm not aware of the details on that, but that's a way that you can be removed from the list?
Move.
Yes, sir. Just unsubscribe. Okay. Okay, of course. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Erwin Jackson. He will be followed by A.C. Stinson.
If I push this green button, it still says 37 seconds.
I'll fix your rate.
I wouldn't want you to shorten me to two and a half minutes. You ready? Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff, Tallahassee Truth Teller. I came here today to congratulate Andrew for your winning the Democratic primary. I didn't vote for you for the Democratic primary, and I won't vote for you for governor, but I'm thrilled of your victory. For eight years, nine years, I've been coming here trying to expose the corruption in City Hall, the political corruption. Your victory has been amazing. Your victory has assured that not only the citizens of Tallahassee understand the problems in City Hall, the citizens of Florida, and many throughout the country. Within a day, day and a half of your victory, I received calls from the Washington Post, New York Times, Tampa, St. Pete, the AP, and others too numerous to mention right here. They asked me, "Dr. Jackson, what's going on in Tallahassee? Tell us about your ethics complaint, and tell us everything you know about Andrew Gillum." I would tell them, "Okay, how much time do you want to spend?" We spent somewhere between two and a half, three hours on several occasions. "We have a issue here, Andrew. You're having a hard time providing receipts for your travels with city contractors and lobbyists. I believe you can't find receipts because you don't have any receipts, because you didn't pay for your hotel rooms, and you didn't pay for tickets to Hamilton. It's time for a little truth. You came with some kind of a cock-and-bull story that you told the newspaper that Adam Corey had tickets, and he gave them to your brother, and your brother swapped this for him, and then your brother gave you the tickets, and for crying out loud, you've got to come up with a better argument, excuse, than that." Within an hour after that was published, the attorney for Adam Corey went public and said that that was simply a lie, that Adam Corey never received those tickets, so he never gave them to you, he never gave them to your brother, he didn't swap anything with you. That's simply dishonest. We can't afford any more dishonest politicians. The, one way that we can resolve this, if you have done nothing wrong, call the Ethics Commission and ask them to release all documents that they currently have now. I've released my complaints. You should release, allow them to release their documentation, and in that way, before the election, not after you lose in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is A.C. Stinson. Mr. Mayor, that's the last speaker we have in this portion of our meeting.
Right. What portion? What comes after this?
Well...
Adjournment.
Oh, okay. All right.
And then they can speak all they want to.
Portion of the meeting.
My name is A.C. Stinson, 989 Centerville Road. I've come before you in June and July concerning the homeless issue on, it's called a street for a property that we have there. First, I want to start off by saying the things that have been done by the city. I don't want to just go into negative. I could probably spend three minutes talking about Mr. Barber and Monique Ellsworth, just about what they've done, how they're always, they always call me back. Mr. Barber probably goes to the property every day, walks around, sees what's going on. He calls me, he calls me multiple times a week to let me know what he's seen. But he also, I can tell he's frustrated, too, with the situation, because, as he says, there's always new people there. So, what's going on so far since our last meeting? You trim trees on your easement. You put a light on your light pole. You place numerous signs that say no loitering. And right now, what happens is people lean against the signs. They put their backpacks on the signs. Our gate is broken again. Last week, I was called, the police was called on me because I asked a person walking on the property what they were doing there. So, then I was there for an hour because two sheriffs showed up and two police officers showed up because I asked someone walking on our property where they are tenant. Honestly, I had something to say earlier, but I got so frustrated when I heard the public safety comments about crime going down, because I don't see that. I'm actually out there seeing it. I'm having problems every day. I'm getting called at 1:30 at night where I have to go up to a property because I have homeless people sleeping in vacant units. They pride the windows open. We screwed the windows shut. They pride them open again. I get called again. Two more people sleeping in units. This is a city problem. This is not a Kearney Center problem. This is a city problem. The city, and I know you raised your eyebrows when I said that, but the Kearney Center is providing a service that the city has a problem. City has a problem with homelessness. They're providing a service. People can't point their fingers at each other. Somebody has to do something. I shouldn't have to be the one to police it. When I call the police, sometimes I feel like they're aggravated that I'm calling them out to a property again. The police are frustrated because they can't do anything. Yes, they're not arresting people. Maybe their arrest rate is down. No, no one's gotten arrested for anything at our property. People know they can do what they want. They can stay there. They can hang out. They can carry on and laugh like Ms. Barber said in an email to me when she visited the property. All she saw was people carrying on and having a good time. It's not fun. It's not fun for me. It's not fun for the other owners of the property. And I really need to see what the city's going to do. I am concerned about your run for governor because right now, I can't tell that you're taking care of your own city. I'm not sure how you're going to take care of homelessness in the state. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker. Last speaker?
No further.
Great. Commissioners, sharing of ideas. Welcome back.
That would be the welcome back. I hope everyone's had a good summer. As we are getting back into budgeting, and we're talking about the budgets and the DIA and the et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it's occurring to me that I need to let you all, one of you specifically, and then there's the other one, know that there are going to be some vacancies that you all are going to have to fill. One is going to be on the Downtown Improvement Authority. The other one is going to have to be on the Tourist Development Council, and Commissioner Maddox is already on that. Another one is going to be on the COCA Board. I know Commissioner Richardson has been interested in that in the past, so I'm assuming that he'll want to do that. One's on the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. One is on the Capital Regional Transportation Planning Agency. Commissioner Richardson's already on that, so he can't do it. He's already tried that one time. And these are positions that it is critical. I can tell you the advantage that I've gained by sitting on these boards and hearing often the same item discussed in multiple living rooms, essentially, and different people discussing and making decisions and recommendations on those items, and then coming here, where a lot of those decisions end up, it has been incredibly helpful and made me able to do a better job. But I think it's important for folks to know, and I know that there are others of you who are serving on the same sorts of committees, and we are going to have to make sure these are covered whenever we're gone. That's the main thing I wanted to bring up, because everything we mentioned today, well, and somebody better keep up with the Blessed Frenchtown Placemaking Plan, too. I probably will be back to see you about that more than once. But it's going to be a new day, but that said, I want to say that, you know, there are way too many times that we're hearing that we need to put things off. The fact is that, just as you were, thank you for saying what you said. We're elected through the 19th of November, and until that day comes, I'm going to sit here and make the decisions for this community. It's the community elected me to make. That goes for, I'm sure, goes for Commissioner Ziffer and for Mayor Gillum. So, that I just felt needed to be said. We are the elected officials. These, this is the work of the city. It is in front of us. And to just sit here and say, "Well, we'll just split all that off until the next commission," they'll get their opportunity to vote on these things, too, but right now, it's our responsibility.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker talked about homelessness, which is clearly a problem, not only in our city, but it's across the state, it's across the country. And part of that is an affordable housing issue, is there are far too many people that can no longer afford not average housing or even below, but any housing. Virtually every year, our Florida Legislature sweeps an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to use for other things rather than helping build affordable housing around this state. And there are other things our Florida Legislature could do. So, whoever the next governor is, and I know, having heard your speeches, there's an opportunity for us to have more affordable housing, not only in Tallahassee, but throughout this state, because it is, in many ways, the number one issue facing people across this country. So, while we can try to nibble around the edges, trying to deal with our homeless issue out on West Pensacola, the broader issue is affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. My quick sharing of ideas. One, welcome back, everybody. We've got a couple of more of these, and I want to apologize in advance for what I will be subjecting this commission to and the staff to over the next couple of months as we round out this statewide race. People will choose to use this platform for their own political purposes, and y'all will have to endure that. I'll endure it right next to you. But...
You're going to endure it in front of us.
Well, we'll, right next to you, in front of you, and so on and so forth. But that doesn't bother me. I just, but I just want you to know that I'm aware that there are those who use this platform as an opportunity to take political shots, but it comes with the territory, and just know I'm aware of it. That being said, I hope you all felt some comfort in the resounding numbers of support that we got in Leon County, to be quite frank. And I think the people have decided, and will continue to decide on these things, and I would just advocate that we keep our head down and that we focus on the job that's at hand. There's a tremendous amount of great work happening, particularly at the staff level, and this commission has given tremendous guidance on that. And I would just encourage that we stay focused on the high, because there's a lot of high to focus on. And we'll push past this moment, and I think all of us will be better on the other side of it. So, thank you for your tolerance and for enduring this process alongside me. Commissioner Richardson?
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're correct. And, you know, we need to be prepared for that. What we need to be prepared for, and I'm ready for it, for any person, any group, any political party, if it's, if it's an election-related issue, the mayor is fair game. He's running for governor. But when it comes to the city that I have lived in for 45 years now, and have devoted the vast majority of my adult life to serving, I will defend it to the very end. That's for anybody that comes before us, that comes before the media, because there is no corruption in City Hall in the city of Tallahassee. And if anybody, anybody can prove that there is, then a complaint needs to be filed. I haven't seen it. What I see, when I come to this building, are hard-working individuals who come to work every day, who serve this community in a highly professional way, providing the highest-quality services that a city could receive. I haven't seen the corruption, and I'm here just about every day. Even during the break, I was here. But, you know, what that does is, again, this is our community, and if we don't defend her, and we let this garbage go out about the corruption that's all over, that's infesting City Hall, and that's an indictment on people who work hard and have never once in their lives been involved in anything like that. And if we don't defend ourselves, then it makes our community look bad, and I refuse to do that. I refuse to do that. I've, you know, I read the newspaper articles, and there's stuff in those articles that implicate me. It says "the commission." It doesn't say a commissioner or a person's name. It says "the commission" and "City Hall" and "City Government." That implicates everybody that's associated with city government in the city of Tallahassee, and it's wrong. And what that does is make our community look bad. And I'm hearing it throughout the community that people don't appreciate it. And as leaders in the community, if we don't take that position, and I'm prepared to do it in any instance that I have, if somebody tries to downgrade the city that I live in and love, I'm going to defend her, and I'm going to defend her with all I have, because nobody, those people that are talking about Tallahassee from Washington, they've never even been close to the city of Tallahassee. They don't know what goes on in the city of Tallahassee.
Let's keep order, sir, please.
Yeah, you know, I ignore that kind of stuff. You've had your time to speak, Erwin.
Great. Thank you.
And so, that's my position.
Apologize.
Mr. Mayor, no, you're good. I'm just irritated by it all, and I just want people to know that I'm willing to defend this community that I've lived in now all of my adult life and serve. And like I said, if we don't do it, that's the image that's going to be portrayed out there.
Appreciate that. Commissioners, if all hearts and minds are clear, I think we stand in adjournment. Thank you all. Thank you all.